Welcome to Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for 9:00 AM Wednesday, March 10, 2021. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, it's citizen input, and we do have an email from J. Marty Brill regarding concerns of mental health and well-being of our school-aged children advocating for the schools to be fully open. So we want to thank you for that input and acknowledge that as citizen input today. Being a Zoom meeting, is there any kind of hands raised or requests for citizen input?
No.
Okay.
And I want to acknowledge that the Bend Bulletin also said the schools need to be open. And I think it's about time. Our kids have really, they've lost a year. So please, get our schools, get the kids back in class. It's really important for their well-being, physically, mentally, socially. Yes.
Okay. And then another note, Commissioner John Lindsay from Lynn County, I think we saw an email yesterday saying he passed away. So this is a county commissioner. He's been in office, maybe one of the longest-serving, 20 years or so. And it's just a personal note for me, I was able to, you know, get to Washington DC a few times. So I just remember that's basically where I got to know him a little bit more, from Lynn County. And then he was a real character at some of the AOC meetings over the years, too, just stepping in and sharing opinions. So just sad to hear the loss of a county commissioner here in the state of Oregon.
Really, he was only 54?
Yeah.
And he passed away from cancer.
And that's my age, yeah, cancer.
So people, honestly and truly, if you need your screenings, I know this past year has not been easy, but you need to get to see your physicians and get your screenings and really follow up on your, your medical health. It's, it's just really sad, isn't it?
Okay. Thank you very much for that. At this time, consent agenda.
I'll move consent agenda.
Second. Very good. And just three sets of minutes today. Sometimes we have a whole bunch of consent items with just minutes today. So with that, call for the vote, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes, yes. Action items. So next item, number four, public hearing, consideration of board signature on an order annexing rural fire district, property for rural Fire District Number Two.
Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Dave Doyle, County Attorney. What you have before you, Commissioners, is time for a public hearing on a requested annexation into the Rural Fire District Number Two. This is a 40-acre piece of property off of Butler Market Road, east of town here, that would come into the district. I think the property will later be developed, and obviously those developments will be part of the district and taxed accordingly. The assessor's office and the clerk's office have verified the information statutorily that's required, and your community development department has provided confirmation that the requested annexation is consistent with the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan. Technically, this is the point in time when you would open the hearing, call for any testimony. I don't expect there will be any. The property owner is not going to be attending, although they do have a representative from the engineering firm that's assisting them, available should there be a need for the board to ask that person any questions. And then we have order number 2021-007 prepared in your packet for consideration if you, at the end of the hearing, if you close the hearing and are able to vote at that time.
Okay. Thank you very much for that introduction. At this time, this, the public hearing is open on this matter of annexation of parcel into the Rural Fire District Number Two. Are there any requests to speak on this matter? We would look for any hands raised or, and it was confirmed that, yep, okay. So acknowledging that this has been a public hearing, seeing no one requesting to testify, I will close the public hearing on this matter. And at this time, deliberations and discussions.
Dave, I, I am, I'm fairly certain that the Rural Fire Protection District would not support or approve this kind of annexation, if they weren't confident that they could provide adequate response time to get to this property. But I didn't see it in our packet. And I mean, can you, can you comment on that at all? Have they had any discussions about that?
Yes, Commissioner. The petition to annex requires that the, the party requesting that annexation get the approval of the affected district. And in this case, Rural Fire District Number Two has in fact approved and consented to this annexation. I do believe in that area, they actually contract with Bend Fire. I think Bend Fire actually provides the response in that area. But yeah, Rural Fire District Number Two has signed off and is in agreement with the annexation and is willing to accept these properties into, or this single property at this time, but into their district.
Yeah. I mean, given where it's located and in relation to the, you know, the airport and other things where I know the, I know Bend Fire and the Rural Fire Protection District do, do know that they have adequate response time. I don't have any doubts about that. But, you know, I just wanted to double check. Thank you.
Well, and this is usually a very good thing, you know, having that next parcel in a protected fire district is usually, you know, a very positive move here. So I got to imagine that's the case here. Any other discussion? So acknowledging we've had a public hearing on the matter and deliberations, is there a motion in support of this order?
I move consideration of board signature, order number 2021-007, the annexation to Rural Fire District Number Two.
A second.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes, yes. So congratulations to the property owner. Item number five, consideration of chair signature of notice of intent to award contract for County Community Services Shop and Parking Expansion.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Lee Randall, Facilities Director.
Sam Bachman, Deschutes County Juvenile Community Justice Officer Supervisor.
I'd like to take a moment and say hi to Sam. Sam and I go way back. We were on a park board together way before I thought I'd be Commissioner. And thanks for joining the county. And you've been here how many years now, too?
I've been with the county five, just over five years.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Thank you for joining us today.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
So this morning, we have in front of you a notice of intent to award contract to Calcon Construction. We had, we opened bids, as I stated in the background, on the 25th, and we had four contractors responding and felt like we got a good cross-section of responsive bids, and Calcon was the low responding bid. Sam is here to provide a little background on the program as well, and he just has a couple, couple items to share.
Well, thank you. The community service is our most recognizable and visible restorative justice aspect that we have for, for our community service. It's very important. Right now, we have three different locations where we meet our clients, and it's, it's very cumbersome. And it's, we have equipment that's in three different locations. It is not practical. And having this one shop to fit all of our clients' needs, adults and juveniles, it will be, will be helpful moving forward to actually have us more productive with our community service. And I do have, I don't know if you guys have seen some of the highlights that we've had over the years of how, and I've got some paperwork, if you guys would like to actually see what we have.
Sure, we can take it.
If I can approach, and I've got two years, I've got 2020, which is, was affected by COVID, and then the previous year, 2019, which was a full year of community service. And I believe we can actually improve on those numbers with, thank you, with one-shop location, making it more efficient for our crews.
So just getting, getting the folks all in one place at one time, having the equipment in one place, and being able to roll out, basically, huh?
Yes. Yeah. And just to speak right now, our adult shop, we pick them up in one location, because where our adult shop is now, we have no parking. There is, it's just very cumbersome. We can't fit any equipment in there. It's, it's very, it's very unpractical right now, impractical.
Sam, I've heard wonderful things from so many people about the value of the community service work in, you know, in the restoration of, you know, of the, you know, adults and juveniles who are passing through the program. One question I do have about this is, I understand that you, you guys do try to kind of keep adults and juveniles, you know, somewhat separated in space and time in community service projects. And how do you, like, not knowing a lot of the details about this building, you know, how do you, how, how do you do that at, at a single location?
So the, the adults are run on Thursdays and Fridays, and the juveniles during the school year are run on Saturday, Sunday, and then the summertime, they are run on Tuesday, Wednesday.
There you go.
There's the answer, yep.
Time separation.
Well, and this can be a real positive experience for all involved, too. I was able to stop by a crew cleaning up willows and stuff at a state landing by the river last year, and I said hi to the crews. And everybody was in a good mood. They were working hard and, you know, a little bit of pride in the efforts, too. So there can be a real positive upside to this for restorative justice, too. So, for the, yeah, program.
So how does it look with our COVID numbers dropping? Are, is the program going to be able to be implemented this year at some point in time, do you think, Sam?
So we've already started back up. We have, it's on a limited basis. We have our COVID-19 protocols in place. We have three community service members per van. So when we run two crew leaders, which is most of the time, we can have six maximum at the moment. So yes, we are, we are working around COVID-19 restrictions, trying to get as much done as we can. And as long as we stay, our protocol is as long as we stay at least in the high-risk level, we can, we can do community service. If we, unfortunately, if we go back up to the extreme, we have to then pause it again.
Okay. Well, more and more people are getting vaccinations, and I think that's really helping. So reminder to the community, please be patient. I know your vaccine is out there. We're, you know, hopefully we'll get maybe more next week. I did hear, unfortunately, J&amp;J, their manufacturing isn't quite going up to par, so that's too bad. But at least we got those original doses. And hopefully they'll catch up. But no, I'm glad to hear that you're still doing this. It's great to see that you had a, what, 47% successful rate with your youth in 19. So, you know, it was almost half. That's really.
Yes.
That's excellent.
Thank you.
So a couple of the thoughts, you know, so this is fitting right into the, kind of, the comprehensive planning of the public safety campus also. So there's a bigger picture about what we would want to site where, and how the traffic flow and the parking needs also. So this really does fit into that bigger picture of a step of a project that we want to get done out there. So yeah, back to the, the bid document here.
So did we have a projected figure that we thought it might be, please?
So about 18 months ago, we had put together a construction, a conceptual budget estimate for both the parking expansion and the building itself. And so the, the bids came back, the direct construction costs are about $63,000 higher than those original conceptual budget estimates. When we factor in the escalation over that intervening time, I think I'd shared with the board that we figured that escalation could account for $30,000 to $40,000 of that. And then as well, there's always kind of a variance in those conceptual budget estimates. And we feel, you know, with costs going up, for instance, on the parking lot side, lumber costs going up increases the cost for formwork for sidewalks and, and curbs. And so those, we did experience some general cost increases in the intervening time.
Thank you.
And I know we have worked with Calcon before, and, you know, the other, want to thank the other contractors for bidding on this. It's a decent-sized project for a mid-sized company, I guess.
Yeah. And with, and with four bids, I mean, this may be higher than we, a higher cost than we projected, but with four bids, it looks like we had very healthy competition.
That's what we felt, as well. We had additional, five other contractors who looked at the project during the pre-bid, and then for various reasons, bowed out. But it did get really good visibility across the construction community locally.
If it does go through, what is the projected calendar completion date? Do we have any idea?
So these are very, kind of, very rough, general projections, but we expect that probably in early fall, a completion date. Once we get through the contracting step, of course, we'll have a critical path scheduled from the contractor, and then we'll have some very specific dates and milestones for the project. But we expect that it's about a four-month build time. So when you, when you work in the amount of time to finalize contracts and order long lead items, we think we could be starting the project as early as May, and with a four-to-five month completion time period.
Great. So is there a motion?
I move consideration of chair signature of document number 2021-219, the notice of intent to award the contract to Calcon Incorporated for the Deschutes County Community Service Shop and Parking Expansion.
A second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes, yes. Thank you very much for joining us. By the end of year, there'll be a whole new setup for you. Put everything in one place.
That would be very helpful. Thank you.
Go ahead.
And thanks, Sam, for joining us today.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
And it's really, it's really exciting to see the growth and evolution over at the Public Safety Campus, so that we can continue to provide growing services for a growing community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, item number six, consideration of purchase agreement with Safe Fleet for Sheriff's Office Body Cameras. I think you have Joe Burnidge maybe kicking us off.
Yes, we're here. Can you hear us?
Yes. Here we go.
All right. I'm here with Captain Garrison and Colonel Haynes, and we are hoping to discuss this contract for body cameras. The entire contract is $818,000, but that's spread over a five-year period. The initial purchase that we will be making this year will be 398 to 38. And that involves cameras for the cars, body cameras, installation, software, storage, and everything. And I'll let Captain Garrison talk on the details. I just want to get that nuts and bolts out of the way first.
So yeah, half a step back. So there's some evaluation that has gone into this process, maybe looked at a few different systems and understanding the, the volume of data that's going to be created also. So I've just kind of put it in perspective what it looks like, you know, from my point of view. And so this is the commitment with a specific brand and model of some of this hardware. So thank you.
That's correct.
Yes.
I actually want to comment on the memo from Sergeant Zach Nieman. I thought that was, reading how you actually made all your decisions was so worthwhile. It was outstanding. I know it was a really serious thing. I believe it was last June. Sheriff Nelson said that he wanted to add this, but to read the detail and your communications, and were they really going to be there to make this, you know, a go? And so all those details were, I felt like it was Law and Order 101. But it was even more than that. It's important to know that we have picked the best system for Deschutes County. And you guys actually studied it in enormous detail. So thank you for that.
So yeah, Captain, yeah, please introduce us kind of to the system, how you think it'll be accepted.
Well, so currently, that is the same system that is employed by the Oregon State Police. If you've looked at that memo, we went in-depth in our exploration of speaking with a number of our, our peer agencies across the state that are employing body-worn cameras as well as in-car camera systems. We, we looked at a three-phase approach to that, one of which was TNI in the field with end-users, then combined with actually the technical end of it, which Commissioner Derry spoke to, what Sergeant Nieman pointed out. And then also our automotive fleet will be in charge of the installation and basically the monitoring of it with the in-car camera system itself. From there, we individually looked at three systems that are probably the most widely used on the market, that being Safe Fleet slash Coban, WatchGuard, and then Axon. Axon was eliminated just based on the sheer price that they represent. It's an à la carte type system, which we didn't feel was going to meet our needs. It was going to outprice itself. Apologies for background noise. We have the sighting going on right now.
Yeah. So constructions happening at the same time, huh? Oh, boy. Okay.
I know. I was going to say.
Correct.
They are, yep.
I'm resisting the urge to swing the camera around. The guy's hammering outside our window.
Oh, my goodness.
So we then settled on Coban as well as WatchGuard. We've had them bring in their wares. We discussed that length with full sales groups, and settled on a 60-day trial and error period with all systems, both in-car as well as body-worn, and then put those in the field with eight deputies, to which, on a weekly basis, they were giving us reviews and evaluations of the system, as well as Sergeant Nieman, our Automotive Fleet Manager, Pete Martin, as well. We're soliciting input from them to basically customer service, which was huge, storage capacity, storage needs, software needs across the board. And ultimately, we came down to it that as far as the end-user piece was, they were very, very similar, which we saw the same results that we were informed of by OSP. But again, in the IT section, Coban was hands-down, far and away, the better product. Their customer service, the, the needs were met by them. WatchGuard dropped the ball multiple times, failed to deliver as, as requested, as described. And so we finally came to the conclusion that Coban was, was going to meet our needs. We also decided that we wanted to store our data on-premise, and WatchGuard was unable to fulfill that. They want to go for the cloud route, which was going to be a significantly larger cost. And so Coban was, was again, was hands-down the winner of that. And if there's any other specific details that I can try to, I know that was pretty down and dirty to flesh that out, to explain further, please, by all means, ask.
So this is a contract with Safe Fleet in, in coordination with kind of a state purchasing agreement or system? Is that what this is also?
Yes. Coban has, they're, they're part of ORPEN, which that's, that's the, we have the same contract that they're honoring. The pricing that they gave the state police, they're honoring it with us.
Okay, yep.
Thank you for that very, thank you for the very thorough comparison you've done of these systems and, and that very thorough description, explanation. One question I did have was about, you know, comparing the, the different system options, was about who will be using the recordings? So I, I know that you guys will be using the recordings. But later on today, we're going to consider a grant proposal from the DA's office to do some technology upgrades. And they mentioned, you know, the, the need to store video recordings. So one of the things I was trying to, trying to figure out is, if we have different law enforcement agencies within Deschutes County using different systems, does that create challenges for one, an end-user like the DA's office with, you know, with different kinds of products? Or, I mean, basically, are you creating, by the time stuff gets to the DA's office, are you creating digital files that are pretty much all the same regardless of whose cameras you used to, to produce them?
The end product that they will have would be, there's really no difference. There's a redaction software that's used. The two companies that we looked at use the same redaction software. The, the basic difference is, one uses a cloud base, and the other, which we've chose, is on-premise. We control that. We're easily, easily able to deliver that end product to the DA's office for their evidentiary purposes. And it's, it's much quicker, less labor-intensive. Sergeant Nieman is here, and I can let him speak more in-depth that. But one thing that he noticed, the DA's office made a recent request of some footage. It was in WatchGuard's system. Unfortunately, as he was trying to extract that, in six hours, it continually timed out, and he had to go back and restart it. And then he had to start the process again the next day and monitor it in order to glean what he needed for them. With the system that we're currently going to use, we don't have to do that. And so I can't speak to what the other agencies are going to use. I know that Redmond uses WatchGuard, and, and I can't speak to what their end-use is with that and delivering evidentiary footage to, to the DA's office. I can only speak to what we're going to be able to do. And I think ours is easily going to meet the needs that they, they have asked of us. And I'm, I'm excited about that prospect.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. So, and I do see the notes talk about, you know, IT support and, you know, a little bit of unknown overhead, possibly. So this is committing to the, the product, the hardware, the, the, the storage, and then building a system around it and learning how to kind of manage it long-term also. So that's the next step.
That is correct. And I would add to that, Commissioner DeBonne, that in that five-year commitment that we have, the Coban, at year two and four, they replaced our body cameras. And that, that is completely cost-free of that. It's just, it's just part of that service package that we're paying for. Whereas, it was à la carte with the other systems that we were looking for. We'd have to be paying, paying that out, which that's, there's a whole peripheral that goes along with that. It could mean new batteries. It could mean new docks. It could be, if we had gone with a different vendor than, than Coban.
So then another way to look at these five-year numbers is kind of the initial investment is being distributed across the first three years, and the last two years are kind of the, the maintenance costs of this commitment also.
Yeah. You could, you could certainly look at it that way, yeah.
Because we're looking at fiscal year four and five, at basically $4,000 of, you know, this total annual deal.
And we get three cameras.
And cameras, yeah.
Free replacement cameras. I always tell my husband, when it's free, you've got to like, cust it in. So that's great news.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Well, 818K over, over five years, isn't it?
Yeah. So he's still divided out.
It's part of our, but, but it sounds good. I had kind of a higher-level question, not about these, you know, our, our different options between these systems, but more about, you know, kind of the importance of, the importance of having body cameras. There was a mention in, in these materials about this video footage helping us, you know, helping us address unfounded lawsuits or, or litigation costs. I, I was just hoping to get a better understanding or hear some examples of where having video camera footage would be useful or would have provided some value in the past. Like, you know, can you describe a, a situation or two where if we had had this, this technology, we would have been better off in the way that, you know, a, a situation played out?
Well, Commissioner, this is Shane. Thanks for, for the question, Phil. I think I'll broaden it a little bit. Yes and no. Body cameras aren't the ultimate solution. But I will tell you why having the in-car camera systems and the body system, body camera systems are important to us as an organization, and I, I think at this point important to law enforcement. This, this is not a project we just started last year. We've been looking at body cameras for over five years. We also had in-car camera systems off and on for 20 years. And so it's a piece of technology that we've always used. There are cases where we definitely feel it could have helped us. One in particular was an incident that occurred during a use of force that we had to hire an independent investigator to look at. And the investment for that independent investigator was, was tens of thousands of dollars, but it was the right thing to do. And so when you look at it from that perspective, it would have been very helpful. And so when you look at it from that perspective, it would have been very helpful to have body camera. And yes, we would have had to use an independent investigator, but would it have reduced the amount of time? And there have been instances where court cases are better solved or quickly resolved with the use of that footage as evidence. So when I look at it from the perspective as your sheriff, the first thing is, is they're far less of an investment now than they were when we were looking at them over five years ago. And one thing to remember, as well as the commission and part of the budget committee, because we'll be coming for you in a few months here for next year's budget, is that when we look at some of these things and making that investment, it also can start a domino where you're going to need full-time employees that are dedicated to support this system, depending on who wants to request the footage, who wants to access the footage. And I'm going to let the captain share one specific example that he mentioned to me, and then we'll take any more questions that you have.
Can you give that example? Oh, so, yes, as Sheriff mentioned, the individual posted a photograph of our deputies involved in a use of force with the individual. It was a concern that it was similar in nature to the George Floyd incident. So as the sheriff mentioned, we launched an IA into that to determine whether or not, in fact, it was a just use of force, or in fact, was it just a minor depiction of a much larger scale. And we were not given access to the individual's complete video that they had to determine this, but through the course of this, as he mentioned, we spent tens of thousands of dollars to determine that, that in fact, it was an appropriate use of force. But had one of the deputies who was in the foreground of this been wearing a body camera, and we'd had an independent safeguarded video of this, it would have been much easier. We would have cut to the chase sooner, and it would have saved the taxpayers a significant amount of money.
Great example, thank you.
Thank you.
And I will just also use this forum as well to speak to the community members, my bosses, that the in-car camera and the body camera systems are not the end-all, be-all. They are only going to capture what the camera sees. They are not going to capture the individual, ladies and gentlemen, who are out there doing the job on a daily basis, and what they see or what they sense when they're on the scene. So that is always something to keep in mind. The cameras do not tell the entire story. They tell the, they tell the story of what they capture and what they see.
Understood. Well, thank you very much. Great discussion about this, and, you know, this is a five-year commitment, kind of just landing the specific tools we're going to have available for the officers in the field. So thank you so much.
Can I ask one more?
Commissioner, if I could say one more thing real quick. I want to say, and I try and share this any opportunity I get, but I also want to say, we are so appreciative of the partnership with the Board of County Commissioners. Commissioner Adair, Commissioner DeBonne, Commissioner Chang, you are always supportive of the sheriff's office and public safety, and I think that's important to note for all of our bosses, the community members. We appreciate you looking forward and being proactive, and you don't get enough credit for that, and so I'll take the time to thank you publicly.
Thank you, Sheriff Nelson.
Thank you. Yeah, so my last question, real nuts and bolts. It mentioned this package mentioned 84, 84 body worn cameras and 28 vehicle-mounted cameras. I'm curious whether that, with that number, it means that anytime a deputy is going out, you know, out to work or out on patrol, that they're covered by a camera? Or will this cover kind of part of your operations? Or, yeah?
I'll let the captain speak specifically on the numbers. We still need to purchase some more in-vehicle cameras, and we are going to have some spare body cameras. And so, yes, in theory, when they, the ladies and gentlemen are out working in the field, there will be camera footage. As I mentioned before, you know, there'll be times where we don't capture footage, and that's going to be by our policy, or right now, the policy is a standing order before we finalize the policy with some community member input. But that is the plan, Commissioner. We want to try and have a high percentage of cameras out there in the field, and I'll let the captain visit on numbers specifically.
So, yes, the 84 is to cover our current sworn staff that we have in patrol, and the 28 is just, there's a retrofit of about eight vehicles, and we have another 18 that are in the process of being built for this fiscal year. And then we will phase in additional 20 the following year and then the year after that. The in-car cameras are significantly more expensive, I believe, to the tune of over $4,000, whereas a body worn camera is 795. And at least by individually fitting every single deputy, we've made that commitment to transparency, as well as, you know, our actions are on display, we're reported it, and it's independently there for review.
That's great, thank you.
Great discussion today. Thank you very much for joining us. Is there a motion?
Commissioners?
Oh, I did.
Just one more point to add, just on mechanics. It's necessary to shift some appropriation in the sheriff's office out of contingency into capital outlay to affect this this year. So next week, on your consent, there'll be a budget adjustment to, in fact, do that. We didn't have it in time to include it with the package today, but just when you see that next week, it is tied to this and just puts the budget money in place to move forward this year.
How much is that?
I think this year it's about 300, 300, 400,000? Joe, you probably have those numbers around the top of your head.
Three ninety-eight. 398,000 for this year's budget adjustment to come from District Two. And, yeah, that's coming out of the contingency. And also, just this year, with our most recent projection, our revenue's up about 600,000, and our overall expenditures, we project to be down about 200. So it's coming out of essentially just some additional funds in this year's budget, but we need the expenditures adjusted.
And I think it's good to note on the heels of what Tom and Joe said, is that this is why the sheriff's office budgets that money for capital projects every year, so that we have that money available for use on the capital projects.
Great.
Sets it aside, not specifically budgets.
Yep, yep.
I would like to make the motion for chair signature of purchase agreement with Fleet Safe, document number 2021-222, for the sheriff's office body cameras and document, is it okay to put it together? Number 2021-228, the car video equipment.
Safe Fleet, I second.
There we go. Any other discussion?
Oh, I do want to ask Sheriff Nelson about the China Hat Pilot Project before we vote. I just want to know, we, you know, we have this little pilot project, and I know that community is really excited to have things clean up a bit.
Right. And Commissioner, as you and I know, this is a broad topic of conversation, so I will keep it very simple. We are in partnership with Forest Services. We go and respond out there and try and be proactive out there. And thank you again for the commission, for paying for some vehicle removal out there. They're identifying target vehicles right now that have been abandoned and trashed, and so that should be occurring in the coming weeks. So thank you very much for you all supporting that.
No, thank you for the follow-up. That is appreciated.
Okay, with that, calling for the vote, Commissioner Adair.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
And chair votes, yes. Thank you very much for joining us and look forward to proceeding.
Thank you for the excellent analysis.
Thank you.
So at this time, we do have a 10 o'clock COVID update scheduled. We might be taking a break for a few minutes, just the way our coordination with our health department, so unless there's other items at this time, yep?
Yeah, commissioners, here's a quick one. You may recall earlier this year, we got word that we were awarded ODF partnership grant for fuels reduction. We had to scramble and put it together pretty quick. It covers three parcels of county-owned land, North Abend Strip of Land, New LSU Cascades on the west side, and then in the South County in the new neighborhood area. So those were pretty ready-made. We didn't have to go through an environmental review, so we teed those up, and in fact, we're ready to go. Ed Keith, our forester, has the contracts, used our pool of contractors. They're pretty large projects, actually, compared to a single lot, but we don't have the grant yet. So DOJ is, you know, working towards, you know, finalizing the grant document. There's virtually no reason why that should go sideways, but, I mean, you can never guarantee for sure. So what we'd like to do, contractors are ready to go, it's the right time to start the project before, you know, things start to dry out. We anticipate it'll be probably a week to two weeks before we receive the final grant documents. So, but we'd like to go ahead and give the contractors the go-ahead first part of next week to start the work. So the only risk is, if for some tiny reason, those, the grant goes sideways, then, you know, it's theoretically possible that we may be on the hook to pay the contractors for, you know, good, necessary fuel reduction work, but we don't think that's going to happen. In fact, we're almost certain it won't, but just there's a timing issue here. So we just wanted to make sure we were being transparent, we have visibility on this, and that you support the decision to go ahead and begin the work without the final version of the grant agreement with the state.
Well, I can tell you, I've tracked that, you know, that funding solicitation or that funding, you know, request for proposals from money that the E-Board delegated over to ODF pretty closely, and those monies are required to be expended before June 30th. So there's also kind of a time pressure on the tail end for the state, which makes me pretty confident that the state will get us that money in short order. So with that, I'm pretty comfortable with proceeding and, I guess, my one other question, though, is, so we set up this nifty qualified, you know, pre-qualified pool of contractors, so we've already selected contractors and they're ready to go? Or do they still need to do like an abbreviated bid process or something like that?
That's already been done. When Ed has work under the pre-qualified pool, then he shares it with them, and then each of them reaches out to him with sort of an informal bid on certain work to be done. And then he tries to spread it out, and generally, the prices are pretty close, but in just acknowledging, you know, the contractor's effort to want to be part of the pool, it's sort of a blend of a truly competitive bid and the need to, you know, keep them busy. So in this case, that process has already occurred, and Ed's lined up the right contractors to do this work.
We're so efficient, we're ahead of the state. That's exciting.
Well, we know that they'll pay us by, what, June 29th? I mean, that's probably, that's probably optimistic, so I would say, yes, definitely. This is the kind of work that Deschutes County should and needs to be doing, and I'm glad that, you know, Ed's got it taken care of, and I do believe it should go forward as soon as possible. I know last year, what, we didn't have the prescribed burns because of COVID in the county. Our Region Six made that determination, and so we actually have a lot of catch-up to do, and I'm glad the county is full steam ahead.
And I'm very supportive of proceeding at this time. I mean, this is that window in the spring where, all of a sudden, it just stops raining and gets dry, so whatever we can get done before, you know, a dry summer.
I thought it was interesting this morning, listening to the snow report, that actually they have 99 inches or so at Houdoo. It's really not that far behind Mount Bachelor. And the Jefferson County Farm Conference last week that I virtually watched, they said our region was at 106%. So I'm just hoping that there's more moisture in the snow that has been falling and may be projected to fall in the next couple of days. So, yeah, we, at least we're over 100%, and hopefully, it's going to go down to Wookiee up, right?
Yeah, it'll take a long time to refill Wookiee up, but I'm still hoping for more snow this winter.
Yeah, well, I mean, at least we were, I mean, I thought it was better, and the fact that they're so close together, I think that's pretty, you know, that's outstanding.
Yeah, yeah. Tom, I do have one last question, you know, something triggered in my brain. Oftentimes with grant agreements, they specifically say, do not start work until you get the agreement, you know, a signed agreement. And so I would just want to make sure, I would assume that with this, the urgency of this E-Board funding, that they will have provisions in there that say, you know, that pre-agreement costs are okay, or if you started your project by, you know, January 31st, that's, you know, okay, or something like that. But I would want to, if we can just make sure that the agreement says that funds expended, you know, or committed before the agreement is signed are authorized, that would be great.
Yeah, great question. That's done.
Okay.
Got formal notification from the state that they will approve work retroactive to February 8th.
Excellent.
So, yeah, we're in. Got that covered.
Okay.
Wonderful. So, yeah, there's support for that, and we'll proceed as planned. Is there any other items at this time?
I did go to the Fair Association meeting Monday night, and they are working, going ahead with a 100%, a 70%, a 50%, and a zero. But as I told them, we are really looking for our herd immunity, and hopefully, by the end of July, we will, you know, be much, much closer to that 108,000 people vaccinated in our wonderful state. So that was, that was, I think it's "Back in the Saddle" is their theme, and how appropriate is that for us, Tony?
Oh, yes.
Back in the saddle.
Back in the saddle.
So, anyway, I thought that was very cute, and I do want to acknowledge that Craig Unger turned in his resignation. He'd been a longtime member of that group, and brought in Brian Ivey to take over his security position. So, anyway, that, no one seemed to really know that.
The chief announcer? He's the one that always grabbed the mic in the whole facility every day.
Yes. Anyway, that was, I think that was a surprise announcement for the group. And then last night, they had the 4-H meeting, getting together all the 4-H programs in the county and what we need to do. So that was, it was great to see all the leadership involved in that with Candy. So thanking them and what they're doing. And she very clearly said, follow the guidelines. If they only say 10, that's what you do. I don't want to hear any problems. Candy was very, very clear on following all the COVID rules. So it was great to be part of that group, too.
Great. I actually did think of one other item, thing that's come up that I wanted to share with the two of you, which is, so a number of people have contacted me from way north county, Lower Bridge, Lower Bridge Road, Lower Bridge area, just to express concern about trash and illegal activities or, you know, kind of disruptive activities in the middle Deschutes River corridor. And it's not our property, but, you know, it's, I believe that most of the, you know, negative use is happening on BLM lands, but, you know, just massive amounts of garbage and illegal dumping, and, you know, people, you know, partying late at night and making lots of noise and, you know, leaving a mess behind. And so these residents were asking me, well, is there anything we can do about this? And what I said to them was, when you have negative use of an area, of a public lands area happening, oftentimes, the best antidote is to promote positive use of that area. So, you know, put the idea into their head, because these are folks who do all sorts of trash cleanup, you know, volunteer trash cleanup and things like that, but if they could stimulate positive uses of that area, then it might kind of help to hold back or keep away the negative uses of that area. And so I'll be interested in exploring that more with you all in coming months, and going to visit with those folks at some point.
Well, and, you know, this is a very dynamic time. COVID has displaced people, housing costs are up.
Yeah.
People, you know, kind of setting up on public lands, but also, you know, just, in fact, think about this spring, we're going to probably see a lot of just... in fact, think about this spring, we're going to probably see a lot of just, you know, outdoor activity. People are going to be ready to get out.
Right.
So, yeah, let's be engaged, absolutely.
Yeah. No, I mean, I think that there's, there's kind of associate, in this case, I don't think it's homeless activity. I think it's, you know.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
But definitely, there are other places where there's public lands, homeless encampments. And there's going to be, I think there's a need for us to kind of come up with a trash plan. I mean, we've taken some initial steps, you know, sending funds over to the sheriff's office to have abandoned vehicles towed away. But I know, for example, that the sheriff's office is, they send deputies out to do these really big trash cleanups on a regular basis. And kind of, are there ways that we can head that off instead of cleaning up the trash, you know, preventing the trash from being there or things like that?
Actually, last week, I dropped off two big boxes of black trash bags for COVO. JW had told me that they are giving out trash bags to their homeless that they're meeting with. And I said, of course, why shouldn't they be asked to clean up their trash? And then if they pick it up? And so that actually is what I've been doing. And I've got a couple of other people that are working with the homeless. And I had said the same thing, that I'm giving them, helping them with that project to like, okay, let's not just leave our trash. I know. And then, of course, what I was told is that, okay, other people come and dump their trash where the homeless are and make it look worse for the homeless. So, yeah, you're talking in that respect.
Yeah, there's a lot of illegal dumping by households.
Yes. And that's really unfortunate. Okay, we do have fire-free days. Of course, that's only for yard waste. But, you know, it's like, really, people need to pick up, pick up and not be, you know, desecrating our beautiful, beautiful county, our state.
Yeah.
Well, and having cleanup days, you know, in Southern Deschutes County, city of Lapine, it just became a theme, put the shine on Lapine. You have an event. And, you know, some people just come out and let's all go clean up for a day or two. So, yeah, we're just putting those positive things in place, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we're doing, I think we have a date set in May to do that in China Hot area. I think that neighborhood, I haven't got the exact date on my calendar yet, but I know that's what they were talking about, was like, okay, we all are going to just make a big effort to clean up. But I do believe giving people trash bags is great. So, you know, maybe we can make a difference.
And there are more and more homeless advocates in our community. So, I mean, if we can, if we can help to publicize events like that, then those people can have a very hands-on way of contributing to.
Well, it could be as simple as, yeah, just kind of talking about some dates of, you know, weekends for cleanup in the spring. So then it's just, everybody does a little bit, and it could really move us forward.
Right, great.
Okay, we'll get those dates posted, then.
Well, we'll go from there. Okay. So, yeah, I guess we're just going to go with some updates. And I was thinking, we might be taking a break. But so I'll work backwards on a couple of items I have attended the last few days. So Historical Society, I'm an ex-officio member, joining the board at the Historical Society. You know, the doors have been closed and then partially open in the last year. But donations have been coming in. So that, you know, it's financially stable, our Historical Society. And then the doors are open. So there's going to be able to be more people, you know, just being able to walk in. It's, you know, as a reminder, it's a great opportunity for a family looking for something else to do, you know, taking a trip, mom, dad, and the kids, and just seeing some of the historical presentations at the Historical Society. But there's an active board, you know, kind of bringing it back online, keeping things in order there. So remember, that's a county building. So our property facilities manage that building. So it's a great partnership there also. I was able to meet with Kristin Guyford. So Commissioner Dare, I think you had mentioned Kristin, still serving consulting. I talked with her yesterday. So she's going to reach out to you, Commissioner Chang. Just introduction, you know, she wants to, you know, get to know the commissioners and the great work that she's offering. So this is Veterans Behavioral Health Services, private company doing that. So great effort that she's doing there. Also Economic Development Advisory Board in Southern Deschutes County, Sun River, Lapine. We had a meeting. And it's kind of that same situation where there's industrial and commercial parcels available. There's not a lot of buildings built. But this is a kind of a call to the world, you know, if Ben and Redmond and Sisters, Primeville, Madras, you know, there's opportunities. People are moving here. So if somebody wants to look at a place to make some capital investment and the economy go around, Lapine's available for that. Sun River Business Park, there's a great relationship there. So just, that's kind of the theme there is, you know, the land that's available. And then, yeah, we all had our AOC days, you know, Commissioner Dare, you mentioned, yeah, so we committed to removing some vehicles. And one or a couple of those may be RVs, remember? There was also legislation being talked about in the committees about a possible, I think it was a fee increase on recreational vehicles. So that's, that means that everybody would pay a little bit more to have a fund which would clean up RVs that are abandoned on parcels. So I'm not saying one way or another. But it's a topic that was discussed. So that may come up in the legislature if there's a fund that would be available for some of that cleanup. So it is cleanup, that would be for vehicles.
I still, when we were talking about that bill, I still didn't understand whether, where, like, you know, because it was like, okay, is that just right by the state highway? Or can you get out into dirt roads in the middle of the national forest and?
Yeah. So it's a topic. Well, but what I learned is, every commissioner there, right? Everybody's, oh, yeah.
Right. There's a lot of people who are concerned about it.
Everybody had the problem.
So that was exactly what we heard, is everybody's got that problem.
Yes. Commissioner Polk brought it up. And yes, everybody seemed to be pretty consistent. So please, don't abandon your things. Don't dump them on BLM land. Don't dump them on the parcel. And don't dump them next to the road.
There's Oregon Alerts is, remember, we have our alerting system. Everbridge is the company. People sign up for alerts in our community for natural disaster events or other public safety events, fire, you know, wildfires. And there's a statewide system being put in place. It is funded by the state. Deschutes County kind of has the Everbridge system in place with a bunch of subscribers. Some counties haven't had it. Klamath County is, was one that didn't have a system in place. So they've transitioned into the state system, which is a statewide Everbridge contract. So kind of like we just heard about the video cameras, Deschutes County already has our system in place. So it's really just connecting the systems, you know, with this service at this time. But it's a discussion around all counties, all state, across the state are invited to participate. It's another one of those topics. And then the AOC meetings are Friday and Monday. This month was the first time we've ever really spread them out as much to see how many people could attend all of them. So.
It's such a better plan. Thank you very much. What was that, Martin? That's Scarfo. Commissioner Scarfo from Union County came up with that. And I really appreciate being able to attend all the meetings.
Yeah.
So it's incredibly worthwhile.
Great. Okay. Well, that got us to 10 o'clock or so. So let's switch gears for the next agenda item, COVID update. And as we're stepping into this, this can be our opportunity for a moment of reflection and thank you about the past year of COVID-19. So we haven't, we've kind of coordinated ourselves. And we're just going to take a moment between all three of us and acknowledge what we've seen. So I'm going to start off at this time and talk about this. So it has been a year since the first case of COVID-19 was reported in Deschutes County. I think of the moment, we started to hear about it in the national news, and it was an international activity, you know, I'm thinking a year ago or a little bit more than a year ago now. And then the moment that all of a sudden, it was part of our community, COVID-19, you know, what, then you go through a process of, okay, is this, is this a flu or a unique novel virus? We don't have, you know, vaccines or therapeutics for them? You learn all this terminology real quick at that time. And acknowledging that it is worldwide also. United States of America, each state's really taking time to kind of get to the facts, understand what's going on, understanding the risk that really is involved. Think about the sacrifices some of us have been through, family weddings, holidays, meeting family members, kids out of the classroom, understanding the impact of youth development, social isolation. Different people have taken, you know, different aspects of this, you know, in their own world, you know, kind of locking down very specifically, understanding who's most vulnerable, you know, mom, dads, grandma and grandpas, youth impacts, you know, how serious it is for, you know, person of different ages. So this really has been devastating on local businesses, you know, how dynamic, seeing our, you know, government say, okay, we're not going to allow this kind of business, you know, and that is really hard to digest. Is it, you know, the right thing? We've all had to deal with this. Is this the right thing for us right now as a community, as a society, for public health? How bad is it going to get? You know, we're one year into it right now. Hopefully, and we're seeing the numbers go down drastically at this point in time. So these are some of my thoughts. I want to acknowledge that we all have worked together. There's been a lot of opinions on this. But we really are doing this as a community and as a society. Deschutes County, our Public Health Department has done a great job. We do have the professionals on staff to digest this, to explain it to us. And Nahad and Dr. Conway with us today, plus all of the staff. So, yeah, I may say some more. I just wanted to get us going here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, as Commissioner Devon just mentioned, we do want to recognize all of the work that Dr. George Conway has done. And I actually want to recognize the fact that Hillary Saraceno was retiring right when Nahad Sotirzodi was coming on. And Hillary was kind enough, she'd been with our county for years. She was kind enough to stay on for a while when we really, we were not sure what we, you know, what was happening. I know we had the shutdown and things really, you know, took a turn. And our health department had to work, I'd say, probably 125%. I know people worked tirelessly. It was unbelievable, setting up something that we really all didn't know enough about. And it's taken, you know, it's taken a lot of energy. And so appreciate the team, our health services team, the partners at St. Charles Health System, Mosaic Medical, Volunteers in Medicine, and our many other healthcare partners that, across Deschutes County, that have really stepped up. And have they not made an incredible difference. Deschutes County has really found its health department expanding and, but really serving the community. So I want to thank them. I want to thank them every day. I realize a lot of people lost their Saturdays, they lost their Sundays. They, they really just needed a time to breathe. And I hope with our numbers going down now, they will get a time to actually breathe, enjoy, and then get their kids back in school. So I know a lot of people really want to do that, is get our kids back in school. You know, we've got the Environmental Health Department that was educational consistently, trying to be as fair as they possibly could. Our contact tracers, gosh, when our numbers went up to, I thought once, oh, when we have over 44 cases. Well, we surely did. I think one day, we had 129. You know, that was a lot of contact tracing. And it just, it was just an ever-expanding situation we were dealing with. The good news is, we've now got the rollout of our vaccines. And as soon as our county can get more vaccines, I know that we are going to even be more in a positive state. And I want to thank Molly Wells-Darling for stepping up and running that program. She's been moved to that position. And I think she's the perfect person. She's incredibly responsible. And I do appreciate her being there. And also the volunteers, amazing group of volunteers all over Deschutes, you know, retired medical people, retired teachers, retired not, young people going and working, county employees going and working at the vaccination center, business owners. Everyone seems to have really said, you know what, I'm going to make a difference. And we are going to really do the best job we possibly can. So at every level, it's been so appreciated, where people have worked at the, you know, worked in Redmond, worked here, done what they can to make a difference. So thank you all for stepping up. Even, I remember when we went down to have our tour of the fair vaccination rollout, oh, my gosh, it was snowing that morning, coming around the corner. I've got 500 pounds in the back of my pickup, and it is like swerving. And of course, I'd just seen a school bus that had been hit. So it was like, not the day you wanted to be out there driving. There were 100 accidents. But there is our emergency team leader, Nathan Garabee, and he is shoveling snow. So you know what, there's no job that we won't do to make this like the most amazing, pleasant experience. The feedback I hear about the vaccination center is unbelievable. And I actually want to compliment the community for taking those vaccines this week and actually serving people that don't have internet access, don't understand, people like my mom, that, you know, wouldn't be able to get her shot unless somebody could actually call her and say, okay, come in now. Or, you know, I appreciate the community has the vaccine this week. Let's see what we can do next week. But it's really, it's an incredible team. And, you know, I appreciate you guys every day. I know Nahad and I used to talk every morning, almost every morning at 6:00, because we're both early morning people. So, you know, I appreciate, nothing like coming to Bend at the height of excitement, I guess you could say. Nahad, I'm sure your twins were like, Dad, where are you? Because he has been working, and everyone, actually, Dr. Conway, everyone has been working so hard. So it's appreciated. I hope you all, and later in this year, can schedule some well-deserved time away, not just a staycation, but actually time away where you get to enjoy the rest of your life and your family and reconnect. So I do appreciate the hours you've given, the days you've given, the weeks you've given, and the weekends. So thank you.
Thank you. So in the past year, our county has had over 6,000 reported cases of COVID-19. And we have lost more than 60 residents to this virus. Before we begin today's update with Dr. Conway and the health services team, we'd like to take a pause for a moment of silence to honor the lives lost and the hardships that our community has faced. So we're going to take about 65 seconds right now. And then we'll return for a few more comments. Okay. Thank you for joining us for that moment of silence. So I wanted to make a few more comments about something very hopeful that Commissioner Dare started to touch on, and that's vaccination. It's both a relief and a reflection of tremendous work across the public sector and the private sector, and in health services and beyond, around the world, that in the past year, we've developed a, we've developed multiple effective vaccines. And they've begun to be delivered across our communities. Deschutes County is one of the highest performing counties in overall vaccination rates and vaccination rates of older adults in the state of Oregon. Over 80% of Deschutes County residents, 80 years of age or older, have been vaccinated. And more than 20% of our residents overall have received at least their first shot. And more are being vaccinated every day. Through the consistent delivery of vaccines and continued personal responsibility actions of businesses and residents, our community is getting a little safer every day. And we'd like to take this moment to encourage everyone to stay vigilant, to keep up their mask-wearing, their social distancing, their limits on social gatherings, and trying to do them outside as much as possible for at least a few more months. We can see the light at the end of the tunnel. But we can't let this virus spread and mutate. We can see the light at the end of the tunnel, but we can't let this virus spread and mutate and make our vaccines ineffective in these next few months before the vaccines can get us to herd immunity and help us really contain it. COVID-19 has taken many things from us, but it has also brought us together in ways we could never have imagined a year ago, and highlighted how resilient our communities and our people are. So thank you very much again to everyone for the personal sacrifices you have made to protect our most vulnerable neighbors from severe illness, and please stay vigilant so that we can get back to work, to school, our friends and family soon. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioners, and this is a special thanks for the Board of Commissioners, to the staff and the community. Well, at this time, let's switch to kind of our standard public health update. We're going to hand it off to Nahad and Dr. Conway.
Thank you, Commissioners. I have to admit that I'm a bit choked up. I'm trying to gather myself. I'm going to go off-script for a second. I, I don't think that Dr. Conway gets the credit that he deserves, frankly, for what he has done throughout this past year. So I'd like to start by acknowledging him and mention that what he has done for health services in terms of setting the tone, pushing the boundaries, expecting excellence out of all of us, has been inspiring and has directed all our efforts towards this pandemic. I am surrounded by 300-plus incredible health services staff. I am leading a public health division which comprises of very compassionate and hardworking staff, and I'm really fortunate to be supported also by my peers who don't get, I think, also acknowledged and recognized as they should, and those are Janice and Cheryl and Chris, who work day and night to make sure that our community members are safe and can sleep without, with maybe less worries than otherwise. So with that acknowledgement on my side, I'd like to, again, thank you for your kind words, and start the presentation. I think I have regrouped now. So thank you again for inviting us. For the record, my name is Nahad Sadrizodi. I'm the Director of Public Health for Deschutes County Health Services. I'm joined by my colleagues, Dr. Conway and Molly Darling. So every week, Commissioners, we highlight, I try to highlight a team within health services and try to capture their enormous efforts during this pandemic. This week, I'd like to say a few words about our STD HIV staff, who not only have played a key role in responding to this pandemic, but also they're responding to increasing reports of gonorrhea and syphilis cases. For example, in the first two months of this year alone, we've seen 100% increase in the reported cases compared to the same timeframe as last year. These cases are some of the most difficult, difficult ones to follow up on, but we have the right team members for the challenge. And the focus for the remainder of this year will be to work hard to get as many cases and contacts treated, and to provide outreach to providers to increase screening and prevent any serious complications. Well, I have to say that it's a wonderful week to be reporting, and it's been like this for the last several weeks. I have updated some of the data here, the total number of cases.
So the slides aren't on presentation at this time?
I'm not against sharing screen, am I? Yeah.
They're looking out for you. There we go.
Yeah, yeah, it's now, it's a trend. So I'm going to make a note on my documents to remind myself, not only of the streaming, but also of sharing the screen. So I have updated the data here, it's, which might slightly vary from what you have in front of you. We have 6,053 cases reported since March 11th of 2020. Thus the, thus the acknowledgement for the one-year anniversary today. Unfortunately, we have also lost 65 lives due to this pandemic as well. This, this week alone, this week so far, we have had 19 cases reported. Last week, we had 79 cases, which is a very solid drop in terms of number of cases from the, compared to the previous week, which was 106. So the 106 plus the 79 as calculated as part of a rate actually brings us to a new dynamic, which is the risk level of moderate, and I'm going to cover that in a minute. In terms of the age distribution of the cases, we are seeing mostly the same pattern as we have seen in previous weeks. Around 50 to 55% of the cases are reported between the ages of 20 all the way to 49. We might see a slight demographic shift with vaccination happening, especially as older populations are getting vaccinated, we might see a shift, but if the vaccination happens quickly enough, that shift may not be prominent. This slide shows the volume of testing in our county, and pretty much we are seeing the tests at an equilibrium of around 4,000 to 5,000 per week. The positivity rate has, continues to drop, it's now roughly around 2%, which is good news. I'm often asked, what's the right amount of testing in our community? And frankly, it's really hard to tell, especially as the cases, the contacts and outbreaks continue to go down. We probably would imagine that we would see a lower number of tests happening. That coupled with testing fatigue and the suboptimal technology that we have in terms of testing and the turnaround of the results probably don't bode well in terms of increasing the testing volume in our communities. Having said that, with new technology, our aim is to make it as easy and convenient as possible for everyone, so symptomatic or maybe suspicion of any exposure, people are able to conveniently test themselves, maybe in the convenience of their homes, much like, you know, a pregnancy test might be done. So that's, that's the aim. We're not there yet, but hopefully that's the direction that this country is taking and our community is taking. This is a regional indicator in terms of hospital admissions provided by our St. Charles colleagues. It covers the tri-county region. As of this morning, we've had eight admissions, and less than five of them are from Deschutes As of yesterday, we've had ever hospitalized stand at 210. So the hospital admissions remain stable between, let's say, eight to 15 during any given day.
Nahad, when you say less than 10, does that mean you're talking four?
Less than five cases, less than five of those admissions are from Deschutes County, and as you're kindly aware, we avoid giving specific numbers since it's less than five.
Five, okay, that's the issue. Thank you. I forgot.
Sure, sure. Okay, this, this is the risk-based framework that's published every other, the metric is published every other Tuesday, but the new graph comes out the following Friday. Yesterday, we had the new metric come out, which shows that our community, through the great effort of our community members and partners and everyone, we have brought down transmission below 100, over 100,000 population. And it will bring us down from high-risk to moderate level. And with that, we're, we can basically try to open up our economy as safely as possible, of course, with some caveats there. More restaurants are able to increase their indoor dining capacity. I believe they can now increase to 50% capacity. It will allow faith institutions, retail stores, indoor recreation, fitness, entertainment establishments to also increase their capacities at different levels, which are provided online. At the same time, I think everyone clearly understands that we are all working towards keeping these numbers low, and it's critical that despite the vaccination rate going up, which Dr. Conway will discuss, will cover in a few minutes or a few seconds, we need to continue to keep our guards up, wear masks, avoid large gatherings, and if we're not feeling well, we need to stay home and get tested. So with that, I will give the floor to Dr. Conway.
Good morning, Commissioners. I do want to say a couple things quickly. Thanks very much for the broad, ongoing support from the community and your support as Commissioners and the many acknowledgements we heard this morning. I'd also like to mention how remarkably many county employees and many partners have leaned forward to contain and mitigate COVID-19 and its effects in our communities. And there are a couple of other folks I think we should acknowledge in particular, and that's I'd like to acknowledge Nathan Garabee and Chris Weiler's service as incident commanders for the incident command system locally, which is, I think, been very instrumental. It's been a multi-agency, and we've had very important details from other organizations such as Steve Strang from Mosaic, really helping us a great deal. So I want to just acknowledge all those things. We are hoping that we're in the end game now with vaccination, and we're making substantial progress. You can see from this chart that we're approaching 41,000 persons that have been vaccinated, either fully, 28,000 plus, or have had at least one vaccine, 13,700 roughly. Next slide, please. This shows the distribution of the two mRNA vaccines, which we've been vaccinating with for a few months now, Pfizer Moderna, and then we've recently had the Johnson &amp; Johnson, which is a single-dose vaccine added. And you can see that we've given a total to date of almost 48,000 Pfizer doses, 22,000, almost 22,000 and a half Moderna, and 57 so far Johnson &amp; Johnson, which is just straight and trickle-in. Next slide, please. So this is our meter for progress that we're making toward a best estimate for functional herd immunity, which is 80% of the population aged 18 and over, and we're also hoping that by the time we approach that, there will also be a vaccine for younger teens and pre-teens and possibly children. So you can see that we're over 40,000 now, so over one-third of the way toward vaccinating that, that population of 80%, a little over 120,000 people, 80% over age 18, and we're making real headway that way, and we're sanguine or optimistic that we will, per OHA's assurances, we will start receiving much larger quantities of vaccine, not starting for next week, but the following week, the week of March 22nd, and a relatively rapid ramp up beyond that. Next slide, please.
Dr. Conway? So on that slide, now that the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine is part of the mix, how will you change your tracking and labeling to recognize how many people have been fully vaccinated? If, you know, if Johnson &amp; Johnson is just a one-dose vaccine, yeah, what, how will this barge out look different in the future?
We'll change it.
Okay. Thanks.
Reflect that. Next slide, please. So we're working our way down in age. As you all know, this week, we're scheduling appointments with those 65 and up, and in multiple settings, the County Health Services Vaccine Clinic, oh, I should point out that due to the Sportsman's Show at the, at the Fair and Expo, this week, we're doing a more distributive model. Health Services, Lapine Senior Center, we're also operating a, Deschutes County Health Services Vaccine Clinic this week, Mosaic Medical, Summit BMC, Sisters Drug, and Fred Meyer. Next slide, please.
Oh, but Dr. Conway, yesterday I called Sisters Drug to renew my prescriptions, and apparently Channel 21 had put on the news, and they, they had to leave a message on their phone because they were getting a million calls. So please, don't call them, all the, I think probably all the vaccinations for this week are probably taken. So anyway, it did, it was the good side, you know? People are asking for it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll just talk about this slide, and in the next slide, I'll ask Molly Wells-Darling to elaborate on the whole appointment challenge. For pharmacy vaccines, this is a sort of a separate pathway. You can go on the, you can go on the hunt for these through the federal retail pharmacy program, 3wsvaccinefinder.org. Once again, though, they face very major supply challenges as well, so be, be prepared for either wait or potential disappointment. And that locally includes Costco, Safeway, Albertson's, Walmart, which has just been added recently by Martin Fred Meyer. Next slide, please. So as we have before, we ask people to fill out a vaccine interest form, and we'll contact you when doses are available, so that's vaccine.deshutes.org. If you need assistance with the form, you're welcome to have assistance, just call us on our hotline, 541-699-5109. And then Molly, do you want to sort of flesh out where we are in the whole signup and et cetera?
Sure, yeah. Thank you also, Commissioners, for all your kind words. I just want to say that the community response has been amazing, especially for the Mass Vaccination Clinic. So I had the honor of being able to greet our volunteers each morning and afternoon out there at the clinic, and I have to say that it truly is because of our volunteers that that clinic runs. We have between 100 and 150 volunteers each day making the Mass Vaccination Clinic run. So thank you to our community. In terms of making appointments, this week has been a great week in the context of, we really have changed how we're doing things a bit this week. Like Dr. Conway pointed out, we have two clinics run by Deschutes County Health Services and the National Guard, and we are calling individuals who have signed up on our vaccine interest form. So for our community, it's just so important to sign up on this vaccine interest form. This has allowed us to reach out to many of our older adults who have a harder time signing up over the internet or getting through on the phone. So we're pleased to say that our Lapine clinic is full, and we are working on filling up our Bend clinic, which will be on Saturday this week, calling individuals. And then, of course, we have Mosaic and Summit, who are reaching out to patients directly as well to help get them signed up. And then, as you noted, the pharmacies, people can go online to that URL to sign up through the pharmacies, and I believe also that Sisters Pharmacy, I think their doses are through, and Fred Meyer's as well. We did give doses to Fred Meyer's and Sisters this last week from Johnson &amp; Johnson. We received 400 doses. We probably will not receive doses from Johnson &amp; Johnson again until about the week of March 22nd. In terms of our signing up, we are doing some changes that will be coming out at the end of this week or the beginning of next week. St. Charles is working diligently with Epic, which is their computer system, to get a self-scheduling module. to get a self-scheduling, uh, module available to the community. Uh, there will be a way for people to sign up on that and then they will get links directly, uh, sent out to them. When that is, when that is live, we will let our community know. Uh, but it will be much easier for people to sign up, uh, for vaccination appointments. Uh, we also are working towards changing our, uh, call center. So that, uh, those changes should be in place within the next week or week and a half. Uh, we'll have increased staffing on that call center, hopefully less wait time and hopefully getting, uh, straight through to individuals. Those individuals on the call center will be able to help people, uh, sign up through a public face-facing, uh, website for appointments when they come out. And just, uh, also wanted to highlight the good news that, uh, Dr. Conway noted in that it does look like we're going to be getting more doses of vaccine, probably starting the week of March 22nd. Most of those vaccines, uh, will go through the, uh, mass vaccination clinic, but we probably will have some that go out to the, uh, primary care clinics as well. We are very ready, uh, and able to, uh, get those vaccinations out there.
Thanks very much, Molly. Uh, Commissioners, do you have any questions about this?
Um, okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, Dr. Conway. So we, we, we do continue to get calls and emails from people who are trying to sign up and, um, you know, basically everybody's trying to figure out how to hack vaccination appointment signups. Um, and, and so I'm just trying to think about how to advise these people. So they have, there, there's multiple pathways now. I mean, they can be, they can be seeking, uh, they can be, uh, they're seeking vaccination through these pharmacy partnerships at vaccinefinder.org. They can be, uh, signing up for vaccination from, uh, local clinics or, uh, at the mass vaccination clinic through us at our, our website or, or at our phone number. Is that basically kind of the, the strands, the, the different pathways that we should be describing to people or is there, is there even more?
Currently, I would say that people should be signing up on our vaccine interest form. Uh, that is the form that we utilize to send out information to our community about vaccines as well as the link for signing up for the fairgrounds if and when there are appointments. Right now, there are not appointments available because we, we don't have vaccine out there. Uh, so going to the St. Charles site, et cetera, won't, won't work for them right now. Uh, in terms of the pharmacy, yes, exactly, uh, what you stated for the pharmacy. And then in terms of the clinics, typically clinics will be reaching out to their patients themselves. So I, I want to highlight that, uh, when we release information to the community on which clinics or which pharmacies may be getting the vaccine, calling is actually not helpful and likely won't lead to getting an appointment, uh, because the clinics will be reaching out themselves either via MyChart or email or phone to their patients. The calling ends up actually bogging down the system like Commissioner Adair noted for, uh, uh, the Sisters Pharmacy. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Chang?
It does. And then is, um, I mean, I understand that the pharmacy program is, you know, it's, it's like a whole separate data set and probably hard to cross over information, but, but if people have, have come in through vaccine.deshutes.org and filled out the interest form, then if they do get an appointment at their, at their, at their local clinic, you know, called by their local clinic to come in, does it then market in our data set that, you know, they've been taken care of or, um, like our, our, kind of as, is the, is the data for, um, you know, who's been vaccinated and where, uh, still really fragmented?
That's such a great, uh, question. So, uh, people who have been vaccinated ultimately are entered into the alert system through the state. And we have a way to poll or report ourselves at Deschutes County, uh, for who has been, uh, vaccinated, uh, St. Charles does. So what we will do is we will pull those reports and then we will cross-reference those reports with our vaccine interest form to assure that we, um, get that interest form updated. So, uh, just yesterday, uh, we did that, uh, with St. Charles Health System and were able to take 7,000 people off of that vaccine interest form because they had already been vaccinated and we got that information through Alert.
Awesome.
Commissioner, thanks for the question. There are a couple of other subtleties that, um, one is that there are two federal systems that are not currently populating their vaccine, uh, the people that they're vaccinating and that's the Union Health Service and the Veterans Administration. We're trying to find a way to reconcile at least the VA records in this county and of course, IHS would be important in Jefferson County, uh, with Alert. Um, the other thing I, I do want to point out is that the federal pharmacy vaccine, uh, program does defer to each state's individual guidelines. So, so I, I did mention you can go on the vaccine hunt, but, uh, you can only, you can only hunt once you have a permit. And this next slide illustrates the, if you will, the permitting process and when, when, when your own, uh, your own, uh, season, as it were, may, may be coming up. As everyone knows, is a very well-worn chart, but, uh, we've, uh, the whole left side of this chart is, uh, healthcare workers and various people related to that. Um, and it was movement that was Phase 1A and we still are chipping away at that. If it was a, a woman that was pregnant and deferred or somebody's out of town or somebody had been ill with COVID and would have to wait for the washing out period to be vaccinated, they may well still come and present the vaccine. Everyone remains eligible once they are eligible to, to, to go back. Some people may have been hesitant for other reasons and changed their mind. Uh, Phase 1B, which started in the latter part of January, the first, uh, large tranche there was educators, early childcare providers, and then, uh, falling in the heels of that, people 70 and older. And then more recently, March 1st, we had people 65 and older. Uh, the next, and it's a very, very large tranche of individuals that will be, uh, eligible, will be group sex and that's adults 45 to 64 with one or more underlying health conditions with increased risk. And that's a very large number of people because OHA did decide to include people that are, are what we'd call simply obese or have a BMI of 30 or over. So they're, they're heavy but not morbidly obese and that means it's a substantial portion of the adult population that, once you get to middle age. Flygrin and seasonal farm workers, seafood and agricultural workers, food processing workers. These are three bands of essential workers that have demonstrably very high risk for outbreaks in their work setting. And then also people living in low-income senior housing, senior congregated independent living, as well as individuals that have experienced homelessness or houselessness, people that have been displaced by the terrible wildfires we had last fall and then wildland firefighters themselves. After May 1st, Group 7 will be a very long list of frontline workers as defined by CDC. You can see that on OHA's website, on CDC's web, website. It runs to more than a page. Multi-generational household members and then adults, younger adults and, uh, older teens, 16 to 44 with one or more underlying health conditions with increased risk. Then Group 1 of Phase 2 that will become eligible on June 1st are people who are 45 to 64 and then all Oregonians will become eligible after July 1st. So the way this is playing out, I think it's very important for people to grasp that we're still in a scarcity environment. As we're in a scarcity environment, it has this eligibility shifts to be more inclusive. In a way, you could perceive that we get further behind each one of these tiers is added. However, A, we are working deliberately through these tiers and B, there's very, uh, optimistic reporting of the throughput and supply, supply chain getting much better starting, uh, March 22nd, the week of that in, uh, Oregon and then increasing into and rapidly through the, uh, the month of April. Right now, at the current rate, it would take us until the end of April or the beginning of May before we get everyone elderly vaccinated. However, we're sanguine that as the supply increases, that we should be doing that sometime, uh, hopefully, uh, very late in March or early in April and then we'll start moving down and moving in parallel through those other higher-risk groups. So, um, I think the watchword right now is to be expectant and patient and we are being deliberate and trying to do our best to work our way down. As, uh, Ms., uh, Wells Darling mentioned, we're rebuilding the appointment and, uh, checking system so that it's, uh, not only transparent but will be more effective. And that will become particularly important as we suddenly get much larger quantities of vaccine. We have proven a very high degree of elasticity in our mass vaccination model where we're, uh, sanguine that we can readily vaccinate 18 to 20,000 persons per week in that model as well as as many as 10,000 through community partners and, and, uh, doctors' offices, pharmacies, uh, FQHCs, et cetera. So we will get there, uh, and hopefully sooner rather than later, but we're still in a, a pinch as far as the supply goes. So the watchword is to be attentive, pay attention and be hopeful and then, uh, hopefully try to be a little patient as well with the whole thing. Next slide. So this is just a summary of the three vaccines we have.
Oh, is Molly still available? Molly, you'd mentioned another location in Sisters, I believe. I know we had, uh, something at the fire station. We're now at Sisters Drug. Was there a third location for vaccines there?
No, no, I was just mentioning the, the Sisters Drug and then also we, uh, did the pop-up clinic last week in Sisters. And we also did a pop-up clinic last week in Sun River as well.
Oh, good, great. Thank you so much for, um, meeting out in the community like that.
One, one other question, uh, Dr. Conway. So, uh, if I heard you correctly, it sounded like supply may catch up with eligibility as early as late March.
No, I'm sorry, that, that, that actually would not be true.
Okay.
By, by late March, we'll be adding, uh, Group 6, which is the adults with, uh, one or more underlying health conditions and the first tranche of essential workers. And the, the total number of those eligible people in the state of Oregon is way over a million people. So we'll still be doing our best to finish vaccinating elders. We emphasize the older elders over 70 and we, was a, there's an additional pathway for people over 70 so that we try to get them, them served first, but we'll still be working our way down to people that are 65 and above. Uh, they're, they're just, unless we have a, just a miraculous inflow vaccine in the next two weeks, there isn't any way that we will be done with that by March 29th. However, as I was mentioning, the projection based on supply chain right now is we would not work our way through remaining elders until, uh, into April, way into April, and we're now sanguine that we will be able to do that soon. Is that clarified?
Got it. Thank you. Yeah, I was, I was wondering whether, um, I mean, you, you guys have, have hinted a couple of times that we're going to get a big shipment the week of March 22nd and I was going to say, that sounds like it's going to be a real doozy.
Well, the, actually, March 22nd is a, is an incremental increase where they'll start providing the minimum threshold for max that mass vaccine plus distribution in counties. But the big steps that are anticipated are, are as we go into April. So this is our, the three vaccines and you can see that they're all highly effective in preventing death. Generally very effective in preventing severe infections and, uh, quite effective, all of them in against all general infections with COVID-19. We have to bear in mind that the 95 and 94.5% effectiveness for all infections from the mRNA vaccines is really exceptional. 66% effective, that's a very, very effective vaccine as general vaccinology goes and this, the, all three of these are highly protective. And there is the advantage of the Johnson &amp; Johnson and that they only require one, one vac, one vaccination. And one more slide, and this is actually sort of the, the, the good news side for people. And I'm sorry that the, the printedness isn't very large, so I'll try to explain this. This is a, um, infographic that was put out by CDC over the weekend about, if you will, additional flexibility for the lives of people that have been fully vaccinated. So where you see the two dots and the little households, that would be where you have the, all people or a couple of people fully vaccinated and then the orange dots are unvaccinated and low risk and the, the orange dots that are a circle are unvaccinated and high risk. So just to walk through this, um, if you have, uh, people that are fully vaccinated or now, it's recommended that they can be at liberty to visit other people that are fully vaccinated. So fully vaccinated means at least two weeks after your last vaccine, um, and you've had the second vaccine or preferably perhaps after the Johnson &amp; Johnson or Johnson vaccine. People that are fully vaccinated and it's done through that, that period of developing your own immunity can now visit others who are fully vaccinated indoors without wearing masks or maintaining, uh, any set physical distance. Uh, they can visit, people that are fully vaccinated can visit with unvaccinated persons from a single household who are at low risk for severe COVID-19 disease indoors without wearing masks or physical distancing, although the individuals that, that are, that are still at risk are probably advised to wear masks. Refrain from quarantine following a known exposure if asymptomatic. So people that have been vaccinated, if they have a known exposure but they're not ill, they do not have to follow the full, uh, quarantine, but there are, there are some nuances to this, so they still would be contacted for contact tracing. For now, uh, fully vaccinated people are recommended to continue to take precautions in public like wearing a well-fitted mask or masks and physical distancing. Wearing masks, practicing physical distancing and adhering to other prevention measures when visiting with, so I'm working my way down through the little house nomogram here. When visiting with unvaccinated people or increased risk for severe COVID-19 disease or who have an, those are the, the, are in circles, or have an unvaccinated household member is who'd increased risk for severe COVID-19 disease. Also advised to wear masks, maintain physical distance and practice other prevention measures when visiting with unvaccinated people from multiple houses. That's the last line of the nomogram. Avoiding medium and large-sized in-person gatherings is still advisable for everyone. Getting tested if anyone develops COVID-19 symptoms, following the guidance into, issued by individual employers and then following CDC and Health Department travel requirements and recommendations. And CDC is not yet recommending long-distance travel even for fully vaccinated individuals. That's the end of our formal presentation today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And, um, the numbers look good that we're really making a dent into Deschutes County, so.
Thank you very much for the presentation today. Uh, yeah, if, in fact, we had talked about if we're going to be stepping down another, uh, level here, the state guidance that we may go to bi-weekly too. So that, that's another, another thing that may be happening.
Yes, we have to average not more than seven a day. So, yes, think seven, guys.
I, I do, I do think that while the, while the vaccination situation is, is a, a, you know, while we're in this eligibility and demand dramatically outstripping supply and there's so many people who are anxious and frustrated with the process of trying to get signed up, that there is value, there's still some value in, in having a weekly update to kind of, I, I don't know, if to, to try and figure out whether there's important kinds of messaging or communications we should be doing. So even when we get into moderate, I, you know, it, it, there may be some, until, until, you know, with demand for vaccination calms down, there might be, there might be value in us continuing to have these, these sessions once a week, but.
I think so too, just because Molly said you're kind of working the system. We're hoping that St. Charles that is running the program can work out with Epic and it can be a lot more usually friendly. And of course, then there are those individuals who, um, don't get on a computer and so we've got to get them vaccinated because they tend to be, what is it, over 70, I guess? And we want to make sure that they get the correct information.
Well, we just, yeah, it may switch a different set of content, you know, how many vaccines are available, where, where are the vaccines happening instead?
Yeah.
How many people? How many people are in the hospital?
Right.
Cases today, you know, so there's just going to be a different set of information.
That makes a lot of sense, yeah, yeah. And just, we've said it a number of times throughout the hour. But thank you again to all of you and all of the Health Services team and all of the volunteers and everyone at St. Charles and all of our partners for everything that they're doing to mount this incredibly effective COVID response.
Well, and stay vigilant, keep it simple. You know, reducing the variables is the way I think of it as, you know, when you're out, kind of understand that let's not mix it up too much for a little while yet. And enjoy the outdoors as spring comes also.
And I do want to acknowledge the fact that we do have three vaccines that are highly effective. Who would have ever thought that that could have happened? So I think it's incredibly amazing that we have this opportunity. And it's, you know, it's unbelievable that we've gotten a vaccine that passed. So I don't believe that it's ever happened that quickly before in America. But you know what? Americans are amazing, and especially people that live in Deschutes County. So let's go down to seven a day, folks.
Okay, so as a follow-on COVID update, we'll have a financial discussion with Greg Mundt is available. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners. I just want to give you a brief update on, since last week, on some, a little bit more information we know on pandemic support. So as you have heard in the news that on last Saturday, the U.S. Senate passed the 1.9 trillion American Rescue Plan Act. And it's heading back to the House this week for final passage. From there, it will go to the President's desk. And my guess is that it will be signed by the, either the end of this week or this weekend. So there are several components to the act. But the one that we're watching closely of the 1.9 trillion is the, it's called the State and Local Coronavirus Fiscal Recovery Funds. I'm not sure what kind of acronym that will be. It's kind of a mouthful. But that's the $130 billion in direct aid that's split evenly at $65 billion each between cities and counties and across the country. And it's distributed based on population. So what that boils down to, and this is a number I've given you before, is our current estimate is that Deschutes County will receive $38 million in direct allocation of funds. These are funds that don't go through the state, but will be sent directly to us by the U.S. Treasury. And the plan now is that it would be distributed over two tranches. The first half of that, or 19 million, would come in within 60 days of the enactment of the law. So that would put us mid-May. The second one would be a year after that first payment. So sometime 12 months later, mid-May of 2022 or later. So in terms of allowable use of these funds, there's been a little bit more definition of what's eligible. And so I just want to give that to you here. So one of the eligible items is to respond to the public health emergency with respect to the pandemic and its negative economic impacts. This includes assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits, or aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. Another eligible use is to respond to workers performing essential duties during the emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers of the county. Also for the provision of government services to the extent that the reduction in revenue is due to the public health emergency. So that could be property taxes, income taxes, any source of revenue that has been impacted due to the pandemic. And another is to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. One of the limitations that has been posted is that none of these funds shall be deposited into a pension fund. So none of this can be used to offset retirement funding. State and local governments are allowed to transfer to a private nonprofit organization. This is similar to what we've done with the CARES Act funds, a public benefit corporation involved in the transportation of passengers or cargo or special purpose unit of the local government. There is requirements that the local government, the county, that we comply with the federal law and related guidelines. And if we, not if we don't, well, if we don't comply or if we don't use the funds, these dollars need to be repaid back to the federal treasury. And there'll be periodic reports to be determined also. And the deadline to spend these funds, the $38 million in the case of our county, is December 31 of 2024. So a little bit better guidelines, I think, moving forward. And again, we're hungry to learn more about this. And as we do, we'll continue to pass it forward to you. But in terms of, while we're gaining that understanding of the specific rules, in terms of these allowable costs, our next steps are really to include, or to continue discussions with the board on preparing for the receipt and utilization and distribution of these funds, and formulating a process to move forward quickly once the funds are reserved or received. So we're kind of in the pre-game time period. We've got roughly 60 days until the funds are received. So my hope and expectation is that we get a better, sharper definition of what's eligible and not eligible. Bring that back to the board for conversation on how we can best allocate these funds within the county underneath those timelines. So a little bit more information today. I'm hoping next week I'll have even more for you. That's my update. Are there any questions?
Greg, within that list of things that you mentioned, is there, do you have any sense of whether facilities, facilities investments might be in eligible use? I mean, you could make a pretty compelling argument, for example, that if we want to be, if we want to continue to have an effective response to COVID in the tail end and be ready for the next pandemic, that we might need to invest in some health services facilities? You know, the service center we've been talking about in Redmond being, you know, the example that jumps immediately to mind? Or, you know, technology systems, things like that? So I didn't hear, you know, I heard infrastructure and some other things, but I didn't hear kind of a specific call out for, you know, that kind of capital investment? Do you have any feel for that?
Yeah, no, that's a really great question. And I think, so the short answer is no, I don't. But it's also, we're early. And again, even from last week, there's been more definition in what's eligible. So I think as we move forward, it's a good idea to keep those top of mind, those ideas. And, you know, at some point, pretty soon, we'll start developing a list of these ideas and then be able to vet those against the rules as they come out. But I think those are great ideas.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, this is the beginning of that, that, it's kind of a project coming our way, huh? Big project.
That's a big project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Greg.
Okay, so at this time, our last item before lunch break today. This is going to be the continuation of a public hearing, consideration of ordinance changes to the ambulance service area plan. So Chris Bell is going to be joining us to kind of kick it off again. As I say, last week, we did have a 30-minute session to open this up. And now at this time, this will be available for a public hearing for anybody who would like to speak on the subject. So Chris, go ahead and kind of start us at this time.
Good afternoons, Commissioners. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Chris Bell. I'm Senior Assistant Legal Counsel with County Legal. With me today, from the ASA Advisory Committee, are Tom Kuhn, the Advisory Committee Administrator, Drew Norris, who's Deputy Chief with Bend Fire and Rescue, I believe, Ken Kemna, who is the Chief of Redmond Fire and Rescue. And I believe also joining us, well, I thought Jared Ernest was willing to be joining us. He may be attempting to, or he may be just busy. So those are the folks who are in attendance from the committee. I believe Chris Perry and Sarah Crosswhite are also in attendance and may wish to participate as well. There's Captain Ernest. And I see Sarah there. Chris Perry may be, oh, there's Chris Perry. So we have everybody in attendance, at least, from the ASA Advisory Committee and from Deschutes 911. We began this hearing last week, at last Wednesday's session. And it was recessed in order to provide time for the COVID update. So this is a continuance of that hearing where we did receive some testimony from, I believe, Chief Sutkus from Lepine Fire. And also, I apologize, I'm forgetting the board member who also spoke on the issue, or on the issue before the board. Being that this is a hearing, a continuance of that hearing, it's recommended that we observe the usual time limits for testimony because I believe there will be a significant amount of discussion. I think that's probably wise to give everybody a chance to say what they want to say and respond to statements from other folks as well. I know there are a lot of people who are very interested in this issue. So I would recommend we limit testimony and responses to three minutes as we usually do in these types of hearings. Other than that, I know there were some questions posed by the board before, both to Lepine Fire and their representatives, and also to folks from the committee. And I believe there may be some questions either from or to our representatives from Deschutes 911 as well. So I would open it up to the board to ask questions or follow up on questions that they asked at the last session. And then also to the participants in the hearing to provide whatever testimony or information they would like to share.
Great. So are there any thoughts or questions from the Commissioners as we get started?
Well, the question I left the last session of the hearing with last week was, is there an alternative approach to determining who is an unstable patient? You know, with a different decision pathway or different decision makers than what has been proposed in the revised documents that we reviewed? And I haven't heard, I haven't heard an alternative so far. So if anyone has alternative ideas, would love to hear those during this hearing. And if not, then I'm going to assume that, you know, we only have one alternative.
Any questions or thoughts, Commissioner?
No, no, I'd ask where the unstable patient definition came from. And I was, it was clear that it was from national documentation, so it only makes sense. It says, the patient is either deteriorating or likely to deteriorate. So I think that's someone that's unstable. And I appreciate that that's, that item number 43 has been added to the document.
Okay, so as I say, this is our public hearing at this time. We don't really have a sign-up list. I guess, can I some help with how we might proceed down a list here? Is anybody from the ASA Committee interested in testifying or adding to a testimony from last week? We'll start with ASA Committee members. Seeing none, at this time, how about 911? There's our three-minute timer. Thank you very much. So 911, yeah, so please provide testimony or, yeah, conversational points. You know, so this is our agency, our agency that we're the governing body of also. So, but yeah, if there are statements, Sarah?
Yes. I'm here today just based on some of the conversation from our last meeting. I was on camera as well and didn't get on soon enough to speak up when a question was asked by Commissioner Chang regarding 911 and our role in this. And we had had a conversation back in, I believe, June of 2020 with Lepine Fire in regards to the process of what would happen once if CMT was put into play to respond to the stable patients for transport. Our concern as the district was how that would happen. Currently, we dispatch for police and fire agencies only. And if we were adding CMT into the mix, how would that look for our response? A secondary call for our staff? Or what we suggested in response to Lepine Fire was that we could suggest that if it was a stable patient, that the healthcare provider called directly to CMT and that that's the direction that they, or what they established with Lepine Fire as the parameters, that they would call directly to CMT or that we would notify the duty officer like we would normally do a dispatch and that that duty officer would then notify CMT themselves and arrange the transport. And then it would be given to Lepine Fire and not a dispatch responsibility.
Sarah, when you say the duty officer, you would mean, in this case, someone, a duty officer at Lepine Fire?
Correct. So we would tone it to them. They would be able to see the call notes, know what's going on with the call, and then would be able to make the decision based on what they're seeing in the notes to contact the CMT to do the transport.
And duty officer could be any franchisee. So it could be any agency, because we're always talking about all agencies here, this document.
Correct.
So that's something that, yeah, we might want to take some time and kind of go back and forth and figure out if there's, how much of that we would, you know, confirm here in this process or leave for the future. You know, so there's some conversations in there. Thank you very much. Is there any other kind of agency or ASA 911 comment at this time? So public hearing, if you're on Zoom, if there's a raise hand feature, that'll help us find for other public comment requests. Okay, so yeah, Joel Widmer. And I think, yeah, so Joel, you had provided testimony last week and as a board member of the Lepine Fire District.
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, so I couldn't see on the screen here. Thank you very much for joining us.
Yes, and my apologies for last week. I'm just not used to, I'm not on Zoom enough and realized after I started that the video portion wasn't working. So you were just hearing a voice. So I thought it'd be better to put a face to the voice at this time. I do sit on the Board of Directors with Lepine Rural Fire Protection District. I'm in my sixth year at this time. Just as far as background, because there's a wide variety of background within the directors, I have served for 30 years in the public safety field down in California for an organization that had a population of approximately 150,000 people. So I'm very familiar as far as the fire and medical aspect of the discussions that are going on. And what I had brought up last week in reading through the document that's being proposed is a lot of this fell, last week's perspective was, a lot of this fell under what the purpose is of this document. And if we look at the purpose, I was going through and looking at the modifications that are being proposed. And I know that I had brought up a couple of different areas that were in question, one regarding stable patients, but specifically the unstable patient definition. So what happened since the last meeting is I got curious and I started referencing other ASAs throughout Oregon, not desiring to go into every single county and review them. But I just picked a handful, just the first five that I took. And I wanted to be fair as far as getting it from a variety of areas. So I went into Crook County and Jefferson County because they're adjoining counties. And then I also reached out and I was looking to encompass counties that had a larger city population as well as a broad rural area. So I went into and grabbed Marion County and Lane County because they have Salem and Eugene, and each one of those has a population of about 150,000 plus. And then I reached into the document at Monmouth County because that is the largest populated area. So I'll move on on that. And basically, just for time purposes, in overview, looking under stable patients, four out of the five counties did not have any reference or definition to what a stable patient was. And then... counties did not have any reference or definition to what a stable patient was. And then, in reference to unstable patient, I found that all of, all five of those counties did not have any reference to unstable patient. That brought me back to really what the ASA purpose was, which in essence, referring to all of them, was establishing and overseeing ambulance service areas, and overseeing the efficient and effective provision of emergency, non-emergency, and interfacility ambulance services. So I think in summation, just because I'm out of time, those two definitions really are, fall out of the purview of what this document is really designed for, and what the ASA oversight is all about. So my recommendation, I know that we added unstable, and that seemed to be the largest one of contention. That one, plus the stable patient, really don't apply for this particular document and ASA oversight, because that does fall under more of a medical guidance purview or document, but really not within this one.
Thank you very much for your time. Any questions for him? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there other requests to speak on this subject? Michael Allen?
Hi, good morning. I'm Dr. Michael Allen, Chief Medical Officer of La Pine Community Health Center. I'm actually just getting on to voice my support for the clarification of an unstable patient, as described in Section 3, Paragraph 43 of the new plan. As I understood, there was some discussion going on last week. I wasn't part of that discussion, but it sounds like a lot of work went into this, and that statement was brought from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. As many people know, you know, some unstable patients can't be identified as, you know, in the current ASA, what is a stable patient by those criteria. So having the leeway of a provider adding their expertise and their opinion is, in my opinion, an excellent change. Some examples would be like a, what we call an NSTEMI, which is a non-SD elevation myocardial infarction, which is basically a fancy way of saying, a heart attack that can't be identified on things like an EKG, or through vital signs, pulmonary emboli, which is a large clot in the lungs, stroke, unstable fractures of large bones, you know, as put in there by the criteria that are currently in there is to identify a stable patient, they may look very stable with their vitals. And there's, you know, a lot of these things, they require, diagnosis requires specialized imaging, urgent labs, early intervention, intervention to prevent long-term poor outcomes. You know, in my clinic, my time here, in six years at La Pine Community Health Center, we've had a lot of conversation about preserving resources in our small community. We have a long track record of not overusing our community resources and working with our community partners, because we realize they're precious. We talk a lot about EMS, because we know sending our EMS down to the hospital, we're going to lose it for a minimum of an hour and a half. You know, we talked about our clinic out in Christmas Valley, it's much longer. And our providers are very good, and they're trained in knowing when to send people. And we work, we exhaust other resources when possible, send it by private vehicle. We give gas cards to have a friend drive them down when appropriate, taxi, Uber. I've even driven a patient in my own vehicle once, because we had no other options. And, you know, last year, we had 23,986 patients that came through our doors that we saw. We sent 25 by EMS, 0.1%. You know, we sent over 144 to the ER last year, the majority by private vehicle. And, you know, looking at those numbers, I have great trust in my team and acknowledge that nobody's infallible, but our team is well-trained to identify patients who may become, who could possibly decompensate and become unstable, those that meet the stable criteria, but we know their medical history. We know that we've seen these patients at their best, at their worst, when it comes to their health. And after a discussion with the patient and what their needs are, that's when EMS is activated. And so, you know, we really take pride in what we're doing, and making sure we're using these resources responsibly. And I know I'm out of time, but, you know, just, I'm strongly in favor of this change, because it puts trust in our, you know, the competent, well-trained primary care health providers who know these patients well. And we acknowledge the ultimate decision to transport is made by EMS and the patient, but that decision should be informed by the assessment of the clinical provider. So that's where I am very much in support of this new statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. Any questions? Okay, so is there any other hands raised? Jeff Absalon, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Commissioner DeBonne, and Commissioner Dare, and Commissioner Chang. Appreciate the time today. I want to reiterate some of the things that Dr. Allen just mentioned in support of the change in language here, and calling out the definition of an unstable patient. And before I say anything more about that, I do want to just honor our EMS partners who have incredible expertise in the care of unstable patients and patients that require transport. And we really appreciate the partnership. And I'll just share with you all, you know, speaking from personal experience, and on behalf of the providers in St. Charles, that one of the most stressful situations is to take care of a patient in a venue where you don't have the tools for full diagnostic and full therapeutic opportunities. And we really rely on our EMS partners to help us. And so I just want to honor everybody. Also, to just thank the ASA committee for bringing this language into this document. I think it's very necessary. And even in response to the comments about whether other counties do or don't have this in their documents, certainly there's been some conflict here, and I think it's really important to call this out. As I mentioned, we honor the expertise of our EMS partners. Also feel it's really important to honor the expertise of our providers, because as Dr. Allen mentioned, many health conditions cannot be relied upon any single data point, or even a combination of a couple of data points. It may take many, and the clinical impression of somebody with training and expertise to be able to understand some of the conditions that are highly likely to deteriorate in the future. So I just wanted to call that out. We certainly have had experience with patients with heart attacks, as mentioned, that do not show up on an EKG, blood clots, pulmonary emboli, sepsis syndrome, respiratory failure, and many others where patients clearly are unstable and require transport. And so we appreciate the language and the partnership to take into account the impressions of the clinical providers involved, and just feel that it's very, very important in this, in this case. So I just wanted to share that with you all, and again, express appreciation for all your work, and for the importance of this addition to the document.
Great. Thank you very much for the testimony. Thanks for joining us. Any other hands raised?
Jerry Hubbard.
Jerry Hubbard. We can see you. Can't hear you yet. There we go.
I'm Jerry Hubbard. I'm Vice President of the Board of Directors of La Pine Fire. Been on the board for a little over 10 years. And I wanted to thank the ASA committee and the commissioners for adding the section regarding subcontracting of services by franchisees. If the revised ASA is approved, that will allow La Pine Fire to add additional resources in our EMS area, and especially in transporting patients. So again, thanks for your work on adding that section of the ASA agreement.
Great. Thank you very much for the testimony. Is there anybody else with a hand raised? Okay, so Chris Bell. You've got your hand up, Chris Bell.
Thank you, Commissioners. I just wanted to point out a couple things in the ASA Plan itself, which is Appendix A, and is essentially a part of the code, which is Chapter 8.30 on ambulance service areas. I would just point out, there's some definitions in the plan that have been there and predate the changes proposed by the ASA committee. In particular, the definition of stable has been in the plan, and has been there for quite some time. There's also a definition for emergency and emergency care, as well as non-emergency and non-emergency care. As the plan does speak to things such as quality assurance, level of care, medical supervision, and speaks to the provision of emergency transport within the county. And as those definitions do sort of predate the changes proposed, I would, I guess, just mention those facts in the board's consideration of the issues before it, in that those are defined terms, including the terms emergency and non-emergency, that are, if not, basically determinative of similar or the same issues as the stable patient, unstable patient difference or differentiation, are certainly close, and I think along the same lines, and relevant to, you know, the issues addressed by the insertion of, or the proposed insertion of unstable patient by the Advisory Commission. And so I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention, that those definitions exist and have existed in the code, and leave it at that.
Great. Thank you so much. At the end, any other requests to speak on the subject? Okay, Tom Kuhn, thank you so much.
Hello, Commissioners. Tom Kuhn, Ambulance Service Area Administrator. I just wanted to comment that what inspired us to add all this additional language came from our July 17, 2020 ambulance service area meeting. We had a number of partners included in that meeting, including Chief Subkis was out there. And the outcome of that meeting, looking through my notes, which I have opened next to me, is that there was a great deal of lack of clarity on language and how the language was interpreted. So when we formed our special ASA committee to look at the language, one of our main goals was to provide clarity. So this is why we added these definitions that were missing before, and we tried to clean up any definitions that we thought weren't clear enough. So I just wanted to mention, that was the motivation behind why we made these edits in the first place.
Tom, I do have a question for you. Kind of the industry vision and purpose of ASA agreement, as in, it starts off with a geographic area, you know, who's going to respond to some geographic area? If we have two franchisees next to each other in a geography, there's a line drawn somewhere, and you respond up to this line, and you respond up to the other side of it. So that, I think that's the beginning of what an ASA is. And then it goes from there. So can you help expand on that? I mean, what is an ASA agreement, kind of the, you know, the history as you know it, and how this tool should be used?
Yeah, no, that's definitely, you know, the main component of an ASA code, or its company and plan. I think that the plans and the codes vary across the state. Ours in particular, ever in the 10 years I've been here, have included the language around stable patients, response times, and that's pretty much what we've had in there to maybe make the plan and code a little more comprehensive. I guess, since I didn't write the initial rendition, I can't comment on that. But, you know, my belief is, it's just to make the plan and code more comprehensive.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other requests to speak? We're using our hand function today to its fullest. Okay, Chief Subkis is requesting.
Am I on here?
Yes, there you go. Thank you.
I'm ready to go. Thank you, Commissioners, for addressing this again. Certainly, like my board has said, we certainly appreciate the opportunity to add additional resources. And that's really what the ASA Plan should be about. It should be about communities adding resources, so ensure that there's a resource needed when someone calls 911, whether that's a facility, or that a person who's out in the field, or on the ranch, or on the highway, that has no other care. And so that's what the goal of La Pine Fire District is. I think the concern from our operational standpoint with so many different definitions are, and the elephant room is, is they limit the non-911 options. And if you do that, that limits the 911 options. In other words, to be blunt, La Pine Fire District is looking at public-private partnerships that add additional resources to handle the call load that we're seeing in our community. Those providers are going to need a certain amount of call, and all those aren't 911 calls, they're already appropriately 911 calls. But this ASA language that's been added to this, that wasn't in the language before, pretty much circumvent any call going to a non-911 provider. And I understand the meeting in July 17, where we said, let's get to yes, and let's protect the franchisees if they don't want to have additional resources added to their areas. But in La Pine, because of the distance to a hospital, it's going to be very difficult to get additional resource in here. And so we're going to need to give them the ability, when at the right place, the right call, the right patient, to move those patients. And we're just concerned at the district that those, especially the unstable patient definition, that's brand new in this proposal, will restrict that. And then the outcome is, there'll be less patient care, and not as appropriate patient care that's needed. So I thank you for your considerations, and thank you for listening to my comments.
Great. Thank you so much. Anybody else? Okay, so the hand raised functions worked pretty well here today. There's no other hands raised at this time that we're seeing. So I don't know that I'm going to close the public hearing, but I'd like to discuss amongst the board, you know, the commissioners here, so see where we can go with this. I've got two thoughts here. You know, we're working on, there's two full branches. Working on, what does it mean to add private resources or other resources in district, as in, what are the responsibilities of the dispatch center, our public safety answering point, and how do that get put, you know, on the ground? So then, I don't know that we're going to solve that today, but I kind of want to get to a point where we feel comfortable that there's a solution out in the future. Or is it, from what we know now, how much of a resource to, you know, our 911 floor, or the agency is it? And as I say, when I say agency, this would be all agencies, because it would be for anybody who's a franchisee. So that's one topic I'm seeing. And the other one is the definition of unstable patient. I do feel like that's answering a question that is out there, but it may not be a definition for an ASA document. So I'm putting direction to this as a commissioner at this time. You know, we're asking, so, and I'm a, you know, I live in the La Pine District, so I, you know, pardon me if I use some words here, but, you know, I, we, I've got confidence in the response of our ambulance service and the community clinic. So I mean, I don't want to let anybody think that there's anything really bad happening here. This is resource management and cost allocation is kind of the big picture from my point of view. So then, the definition of unstable, really, it provides the opportunity for somebody to be in the medical business. And as I say, if I'm sick, I want to go to the medical, to the doctor. And I knew a previous community member who was running a clinic, you know, before the two clinics we're talking about here. And I want that person to be able to call and get the resources they need. But by answering the question of what an unstable patient is, and using the words as defined, it really is kind of offering something to the medical community that I don't know that needs to be in this document. And I know it's an issue that's out there. I'm just not comfortable putting it in this document. I mean, it's kind of a big policy choice, is the bottom line, is what I'm seeing.
Actually, listening to Dr. Michael Allen from the La Pine Community Health Center, the fact that they, through his analysis of almost 24,000 patients, last year, they only sent 25 by EMS, I think that is pretty remarkable. And I feel like adding that definition is critical in today's world. I don't know if you remember the debate we had in 18, but we had a debate on the east side of Bend, and someone in the audience collapsed, and it happened to be a personal friend of mine. And it took 16 minutes to get someone there. And we all thought, because he has heart conditions, that that was going to be the end. So, you know, that was a long 16 minutes for me in that situation. You remember that?
I was in the room, yes.
Yes, you were there. It was my friend. So anyway, I kept thinking, oh my gosh, if that was my husband, what would I do? I would throw him and drive him somewhere, because definitely he clearly needed a physician. But no, hearing for Dr. Allen, I appreciate that. You know, maybe we could have heard from physicians. I appreciate that. You know, maybe we could have heard from physicians, you know, around the rest of the county, Redmond, et cetera. But, and then Dr. Epsilon from St. Charles. I don't, I just feel like, in today's world, we need to do the best we can. And adding that definition, it seems relevant.
I would say that, you know, as Chris mentioned, our existing, our existing language in the ASA plan does help us tease apart what's an emergency situation and a non-emergency situation, even if it's not talking about stable and unstable patients. So in some, in some ways, I would consider this stable and unstable patient definition just sort of like an extension of that, and kind of like a, you know, a fleshing, a fleshing out of, of that kind of decision process between what's an emergency and what's not a non-emergency that is already part of this ASA plan. And I, and it does seem to me that diagnosing some, whether someone's stable or unstable, is important to determines, determining how urgent it is that, that they get transported to a given medical facility. So I, I would support the inclusion of the, these additional definitions. And, you know, as you said, Commissioner DeBonne, we definitely want to recognize that people are trying to solve problems with this addition, and solve problems with, you know, these definitions. But it doesn't mean that, it doesn't mean that anything bad has happened so far. And, you know, I very much want to recognize, you know, our emergency service providers and everyone else who has been providing the care that's needed to, to our community, to make sure that people are safe, and putting that, you know, that there are, you know, challenges with, you know, how do you provide sufficient resources, and how do you pay for it, and things like that. But, you know, I just really appreciate that while there's some strains around those, those questions currently, that everyone has, you know, put patient care and patient safety, you know, number one, and been addressing that.
Is there, so then I'm going to have a question, maybe back to the industry. Is there a clear definition of who's a medical provider? As I say, I don't know who could help us. Could we start with Tom Kuhn? I mean, is, when we say medical provider, contacting 911 for emergency transport, is there clarity on who are medical providers, or the definition of medical provider?
We don't have that in the language, per se. That would be something that could be added, if that was deemed necessary.
So, vision-wise, myself is, you know, I've, I've, somebody's not feeling well, or something's wrong, and they walk in the front door of somebody's facility who they think is a medical provider, and then that determination is, that person called for somebody else's 911 transport, because you don't look well if, can you've walked into my door. So I'm keeping it at a generic level. And then, as I say, the next step in this is, I've determined to walk into a medical facility for help, maybe expecting somebody to give, you know, a medical opinion. But their medical opinion is, you need a ride to an emergency room, which just triggered a $24,000, $2600 transport ride, which I may or may not have chose to do by getting up off of wherever I was, to get in the front door of your medical facility. So, I mean, it's just, that's, I mean, it's interesting when you, when you look at it like that. So now we've just triggered a medical transport bill, where I might have, as a patient, I might have made a choice not to do that before I walked in the door. I know it's just a scenario out there, but that's kind of where I can go with this also. Oh, yeah, so please, very, yeah, so this is a public hearing on the matter. We had our three-minute testimony, now it is more of a, just an interactive discussion. So Drew Morris, please, no, you have your hand raised. I want to acknowledge that you're willing to speak.
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners. Drew Norris, I'm Deputy Chief of EMS for Bend Fire. I just wanted to kind of maybe clarify for you guys this unstable patient definition, and kind of put into a perspective that, with the stable patient and unstable patient, it's a guideline for EMS to work within. And the way that it works with the unstable, the way that I kind of, I read it and understand it, is a facility would be calling us to transport or to help evaluate a patient at a medical facility. So those medical facilities are going to either be a doctor, a nurse, somebody that works at that facility is going to be the one calling 911, deciding that patient's unstable. This isn't so much for a patient that is calling from their own personal home. So I don't know if that, if that makes sense for what I'm kind of saying there. But I think it's also important to remember that just because we have unstable patient there, and a facility calls to have us transported, that facility, the doctor, the nurse, whoever's requesting transport, along with the EMT or the paramedic on site, along with the patient, have the choice whether the patient wants to go by ambulance or not. It's ultimately, if the patient has sound mind, they can make decisions on their own. They get to decide if they want to go to the hospital or not. And there's been many a times that we've showed up at, say, a BMC or a St. Charles clinic, where that patient doesn't want to go to the hospital, and that's a right that we have to, we have to abide by.
So there is, there's an opportunity for the patient to, a medical provider has determined, or has recommended should be, should receive emergency transport, to refuse that emergency transport?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And, you know, and most of the time, if not all the time, the medical providers on scene are going to encourage that person to go, because it can give them the risks, the benefits, and all of those different issues that go with it. But ultimately, it is their decision if they want to go or not.
So these are words on a page. This is the ASA document defining franchisees all across the county. And as I say, when I read the words, it says, "The medical provider contacting 911," so the medical provider has called 911, "may make the determination whether or not the patient is stable or unstable, and require emergency transport." These patients require emergency transport. So as I say, I mean, you're saying there's a negotiation, there's a decision space for the patient, and this word says that, the words here, I think, say that the medical provider, according to our ASA, has the authority to say, no, you're going. So as I say, I mean, I'm comfortable with this document working through, you know, possibly defining, you know, who's dispatching other resources without this, you know, statement. So, and I've studied it, and I've been thinking about it. So I'm comfortable with this document without the definition of unstable patient.
Or to address the concern that you just expressed about, you know, this doesn't, this doesn't reflect that there is patient discretion involved in this, in this decision process. I mean, we could, I mean, it also seems like the definition, that we could keep a definition of unstable patient and revise it to, you know, to be, to better reflect what actually is happening.
Well, unstable patient is the flip side of that, and we do have a definition of a stable patient. Because then, at that point, it's a, it is, you know, okay, do we have these facts, stable patient, yes or no? And then you go from there. I mean, so it's already defined by default. So as I say, that's how kind of I get to that.
But, but we heard from, you know, we heard from some of the physicians who just spoke to us about how, you know, vital signs and the things that you can measure with, you know, an EKG, EKG machine or something like that, don't, don't necessarily reflect all of the potential emergency situations that, that, that might be facing a patient.
Oh, absolutely.
So it seems like there, we need, we need some way to capture that, that there are, you know, someone might, you know, someone based on their vitals might look okay, but that there, there is, you know, that, you know, people with certain kinds of medical training might be able to recognize that they're really in an emergency situation.
I think that is truly indicative in this case. People that are medically trained have an area, and then they also, and sometimes, I believe they develop a sixth sense, too. I remember the story of my husband was an EMT, was taking care of a patient who I think had just been hit by a horse, and he figured out that that woman needed to get to the hospital immediately, you know, just by a couple little signs. And, you know, probably the normal person seeing her wouldn't have picked it up, but it was, it saved her life, is what it did. So I just feel like, leaving unstable here, I totally recognize what our medical community is saying, and I think it's important to add it.
I would, I would agree with that.
Okay. So as I say, I mean, I'm saying my piece and making my case on unstable patient, how I'd feel comfortable knowing that it's, it's a relationship, it's a responsibility. If I'm a medical provider, or if I'm a medical transport agency, the patient's best interest is at everybody's heart here. You know, the words, as I read them, give, give the medical provider that tran, and it boils down to the dollars, too, as I say, remember. I mean, a choice may have been made right before somebody walks into a clinic. So think about this. I mean, if you walk into a clinic, you say, I don't feel well, I want, do what you can for me, and this is just another edge scenario, they may not say the words, I've already chosen not to call 911, which means I've already made a financial choice not to, you know, take that emergency ride, knowing possibly, I don't have insurance or financial means for this. So there's a choice before this all starts, that we're taking away, possibly, sometimes. I mean, I'm just trying to think of the other scenario where this might be, you know, triggering something.
Well, I'm thinking, I'm thinking of the person who's had a headache. And, you know, when you have a bad headache, that is something that you, as an individual, should never ignore. And when those, you know, they would go to the clinic, and they say, well, no, I'm really okay, I just have a bad headache. Well, a lot of times, that is something, please don't ignore. I'm sure that the testing that would need to be done would probably be at St. Charles, and, you know.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, I just feel like it's, it's just making our document stronger and more relevant to today's, you know, medicine is really advanced. And this document hadn't been updated for a while. What, since 2013?
Oh, yeah, no, and there's lots of great updates in here. I mean, this is just one doc, one, one item we're talking about.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Weeks ago.
Yeah. At this point, so I'm not going to be supportive of a word unstable patient, the definition number 43, but it could be a two-to-one vote to work our way back from that. So I'm just documenting, if we, if we put that there, working our way back to, how do we dispatch these resources? There's kind of an unknown step. If a franchise is able to add resources other than their, their agency, so a private company, yeah, do we have an expectation of the agency to be calling on resources, the medical provider to call on resources, because now they're available, or 911 to do it? And I don't know that we're going to solve that in the next 15 minutes or so, but I'm just acknowledging that's another step that's out there. Does, does that trigger a conversation or a comment by somebody that's following this and out there? Anybody want to raise their hand? Yes, please.
Going, going back to a previous conversation that we were just having in relation to the provider unstable patient, Commissioner Chang asked if there was some clarification or definitions in there for what we use. And I'm kind of augmenting off Chief Norris's statements. We do have a document on file that we use, and it's part of our protocols for refusal and informed consent. Yes, those, those individuals absolutely have the right to refuse transport by us if they meet certain conditions. And just highlighting some of them, they have to have no significant, significant mechanism of injury, no signs of traumatic injury, no acute medical conditions, and no behavioral problems that place a patient or others at risk. So if they went into the clinic for a reason that they felt sick, well, they actually do have a medical condition in there. And we're going to be using that and saying, hey, you actually do have this, there's a high probability you need to go. If the provider at that clinic was the one to call us, that provider is usually a doctor, someone more highly trained than us, and we work under doctors, we follow, we work under their licenses. So at the discretion of the medical provider working at those facilities, we had come up with a team approach to what's best for that patient. And if that's us transporting them, then we're going to transport them. I just wanted to throw that in there, that there is other pieces out here that we do utilize to make those decisions. It's not based off this one definition in this document.
Thank you very much. And as I say, that, I mean, it's going to be a point of view. So, and I do believe in the, in the medical system, and the relationships, and the, the passion in serving, so that I just get to the conclusion that putting unstable doesn't need to be there relative to stable. So that was that issue again. So as a Board of Commissioners, are we comfortable with the definition of adding resources? Like I said, I don't have the words I'm referring to now, but being able to contract with a private company, or adding resources to the franchise, other than the, you know, the rigs in service currently? And as I say, I think I see that there's just, there's going to be a step here. How do, how do we do that? Any thoughts on that?
I mean, we've heard from members of the ASA committee that the opportunity to, to subcontract will, will, will help them ensure that there's adequate resources to address the emergency needs in our community.
Yeah, yes. Well, yeah, so there's a yes on that, and then, does 911 call night, call the franchisee and says, you know, there's a medical transport call, and they say no? You know, so I'm just saying, there's, there's some scenarios in there that may need to be worked out. And, and I'm sure we can do it. I was just trying to figure out if we would do that here a little bit more with a, some analysis, or pass the ASA document as it is and have them work it out.
I believe, I recall to pass the document, and then, then follow up with working it out, not making it at, what is it, an unfunded mandate? Is that what we're always talking about with the state? So.
Yeah.
I was actually thinking of Blackview. It's such a smaller, you know, it's an ASA of 13 square miles, and there aren't, what is it, 30,000 people, like Lapine, the area that they're drawing into. But they have about, almost an hour ride, if you're at the back of Blackview, to get to, like, St. Charles. So I was just thinking of the time factor, and sometimes that is so critical to get that person to the hospital, and you're talking 55 minutes. So, you know, it's the same thing with Lapine, that, you know, sometimes minutes do count.
Yeah. Okay.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, did, what, did you make a motion? I missed like one or two words in it.
Oh, you didn't make a motion? I said, okay, I can make an emotion.
No, 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 I just thought, I thought I might have heard.
I just said I didn't, you know, okay, I, we're always talking about making an unfunded mandate. I didn't think that's what we were looking at today, to looking at the funding. But the fact that the document has been updated, it's, you know, we have looked at it, we've been looking at it for quite a while now, and it's, it's pretty critical that we do improve things as best we can in Deschutes County. So, and our population is growing, and I know the needs are growing, and so, of course, we're going to have to look at funding at some point in time, sooner than later.
Well, and as a board, we made the choice to do this, you know, to, to start this activity, you know, to have this review. So, I mean, I'm supportive of moving, you know, doing this project. So we are in the middle of a public hearing, so at this time we can, I'll close the public hearing. So it looks like, you know, Commissioners are ready to proceed. You know, there was kind of a mix of deliberations at the time, but this time we can formalize, the public hearing is closed, and, you know, where do we go from here? Sounds like it almost went.
Okay. So, well, I can, I can make the motion then, to, at this time, for Board, to consideration of our signature on Board Ordinance Number 2021-003, text amendments to DC 8.30 ambulance service area, and to the ambulance service area plan for Deschutes County.
I second.
So it's been moved and seconded. As I say, there's the one definition of unstable patient that I'm not supportive of, so I won't be voting for this. There was a proposal this be done by emergency, and I know that would be a request by.
And we need three votes.
Yeah, exactly. I was just kind of coming to that conclusion. So this being an ordinance, it would go into effect 90 days. So I guess it's. So, I guess this, this is where county legal can help us. Is this a first and second reading situation, or...
If you adopt by emergency, yes, it'd be a first and second reading. If you're not going to adopt by emergency, for lack of a unanimous, then it would be a first reading by title only. It would come back in two weeks for second reading, and, and, and that would begin the, the process for the 90-day application.
Yeah. Okay, so, as I say...
Commissioner DeBonne, if we, if we modified the unstable patient additions, additional language in, in this ordinance to, you know, you know, reflect, again, the actual decision process and acknowledge that there is an opportunity for, for patients to refuse emergency transport if they, if they, if they don't want to, if they don't want to incur that cost, or they don't, they don't think that their life is, you know, at, at, at the risk that a medical provider has to...
I know, and I'm not a medical doctor.
If we did, if we, if we did revised language like that, would, would that address your concerns, or would you still not want to have the unstable patient language in here?
I was invited to community meetings in Southern Deschutes County last year, sat in, in the room with, you know, multiple, you know, all these groups, the Lapine Fire Ambulance Service, St. Charles, and Lapine Community Clinic. And, you know, there's, it's, it's a resource issue that is explained to me. The, the opportunity would be to add more resources to the Lapine Fire District by having the voters put a rate out to pay for ambulance service. So, everybody pays a little bit all the time for ambulance service. Or, the ambulance service is a, you know, fee for service. It's an enterprise fund of the fire district where it makes its own, you know, income and expense. So, when we do that at the fairgrounds, it's solid waste. So, that, that's where the, you know, the resource issue is here. And we're, we're kind of answering some of that by providing this statement of an unstable patient that the resource shall be available by this agreement, and then the district is responsible. So, then it's the fine line of, of the franchisee, you know? I mean, can you expand this service to do this or not? So, then, you know, the franchisee makes a choice of, I provide this service or not. So, I'm just saying, it answers a question that wasn't asked originally, is my point. And it's, and it's an issue. There's another discussion out there. That's why I'd like to stay away from unstable patient.
Well, I respect our medical community and the fact that they are saying it's necessary. I feel that, and if they can actually sign a, a document that says they refuse to take the ambulance, then they still are given that option.
Well, and as I said, that's out there. So, that's my point. I think there's other backstops in here. I'm not saying that there's, I would add risk or make medical decisions, I am not qualified for it. I think there's relationships and documentation out there that, that do provide that, that professional service for medical. So, just when I read this statement, I just go a different way, you know, this one definition. Are you still deliberating of, so we're kind of in the middle of a motion now? And, and it's a shame to have an ASA with a two-to-one vote, too. I mean, I, I acknowledge that upfront.
And I, since, you know, since this is something that our ambulance service area has requested of us, you know, I, I would love to figure out a way to get the, get this done by emergency determination, so that they could have access to these opportunities as fast as possible. But if we're not able to get to a unanimous vote, then I, I, I think we should still proceed with the vote, and if we need to have a second hearing, then, and, and, you know, 90 days, then, well, we can do that.
So, it's 90 days from the second reading, then, Dave? Is that what you said?
That, that's correct. In, in Oregon law, if you don't, a county doesn't pass by emergency, it's 90 days.
So, then, but this, you know, on the, on the positive side, it does put something more concrete. It stops a moving part, you know? It, it stops something that's being discussed and moving.
Yeah, we're, we're moving forward.
Yeah. Okay, so, seeing no other discussion, we'll, we'll refer to, we'll call this a first reading. So, let's acknowledge that this is a first reading. Well, no, I'm saying, I'm going to make the, we're calling it a first reading. The motion was made, it's a first reading, and you support that?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm just making sure. Yeah, so first and seconded. So, now I'm going to call for the vote on the first reading of Ordinance Number 2021-003. Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes no, just for the one definition discussion. So, at this time, it'll be the first reading of Ordinance 2021-003, an ordinance amending Chapter 8 dot 30 ambulance service area of the Deschutes County Code and amending Appendix A to Chapter 8 dot 30, the ambulance service area plan for Deschutes County, and, and not declaring an emergency. So, that was proposed as emergency in case, so that's, yeah. Thank you very much for the discussion, everybody.
The actual ordinance document that comes back in two weeks for second reading and adoption will remove the emergency clause, that'll be...
Yeah, so that was in the...
Omitted.
Yep, okay. Thank you so much. At this time, we will take our lunch break and reconvene at 1 o'clock for the second Welcome back. This is our County Board of Commissioners meeting. Next item on the agenda is Natural Resources and Forestry, a consideration of contract for Central Oregon Cohesive Strategy Initiative. Joe Stutler, thank you for joining us.
Good, thank you. Is the microphone on?
Yeah.
Okay, good, thank you, thank you. Well, listen, thank you for the opportunity, and for the record, Joe Stutler, Senior Advisor for Deschutes County, and again, thanks for the opportunity presented today. I, I shared something, had this thought about collegiate strategy and Central Oregon Living with Fire, and one of the, the things we have with collegiate strategy at times is the thing, is a bit of a language barrier. So, the, and I'm not going to, I don't want to spend a, an awful lot of time on it. So, I, I shared the, the Deschutes County Goals and Objectives that our county administrator shared Friday's newsletter. So, I took that, then I compared it to the vision and the strategic goals of the collegiate strategy, and then, the last page is I did the crosswalk. So, how similar is what we're doing here in the county for all things considered, and how it relates to the collegiate strategy? And so, it was pretty clear that, you know, if you'll see the highlight in the yellow, there's remarkable similarities in terms of what we're attempting to do here with our goals and objectives with the collegiate strategy. And so, I, I share that story because that's the challenge...
He handed it out just moments...
It should be Ronnie Duster.
Yep.
Yeah, you bet. So, I share that story because we see that not only across the West, but the other geographic or the regions that the collegiate strategy works with, is that people are doing all sorts of good stuff, but they're not connecting the dots to the strategy. And so, if you take a look at the meeting we had on the 19th with the Steering Committee, huge need of communicating, documenting, connecting the dots to, it's not a fuel break, it's creating resilient landscapes. And when I look at the goals and objectives of our county, the, every one of those, there's a direct connection to the collegiate strategy, which it's just not being, we're just not being communicated as, you know, as, as it should, to be able to understand truly what implementation is and acceptance of risks. So, I just, I needed to just tell that story, and we was on a call just yesterday with 100 federal agency administrators across the United States, talking about collegiate strategy, talking about learning laboratories, that sort of stuff. And almost everyone that was on there tended to drift it off to one element of what they were doing or not doing, and not seeing the connection to the strategy. So, it was a wonderful opportunity. So, that's the communications cha, challenge with the collegiate strategy, that it's a, it's a cultural shift, you know, and, and language. So, just needed to, I needed to share that with you, and I appreciate the time to do that. So, let's get to the, get to the agenda. So, the request specifically today is for the county to revalidate the Oregon Living with Fire program, solicit a program coordinator using the Request for Proposal process that we've used in the past, and continue to administer the program coordinator contract and increase the county's share of the financial support. And so, just to be clear, that, that difference is a grand total of 750 bucks. And that resulted in a mathematical error when we calculated the 100 percentage for the stakeholders. So, we're talking about, it used to be 37, 33,750, now it's 34,500. So, it's, it's a difference of 500 bucks, and that got caught as we moved through the resolution process into finance, and that's where the .01 difference in adding up to 100 percent. So, there's the, there's the difference. So, you know what that is about. So, that's the request, the background. I'm not going to read all of that, I'm just going to paraphrase. So, we've, we've been here over two years ago. This actually started, I think, some of you were certainly here, certainly Commissioner Chang with a, a different role, and certainly Commissioner DeBonne, as we started this process. And worked through agreements with other counties or the stakeholders, which brought us to the creation, the position, the resolutions, the MOUs, and it took about a year to bring all that together on finance agreements. So, we've been there, and so, all of the, all the documents, all the, you know, the stuff behind the stage, so to speak, the agreements with the Forest Service, the MOUs of the other counties, all that is there, including the resolution from this board to create, you know, the position, be the fiduciary, if you will, with the coordinator position. And so, that's the, that's the background. I think everybody knows in January of this year, the previous program coordinator decided to pursue other things, which left a vacancy. So, in consultation with the county administrator and discussions with our county forester, I was given, given the assignment to revalidate the program and the need for coordinator with the Steering Committee, and then certainly this board. So, we have, we're in the final steps of that process. Commissioner DeBonne was present at a meeting on February 19th. We had all the, all the members of the Steering Committee, with one exception, the commissioner from Jefferson County, and, and the notes of that are certainly available as part of your agenda package. And so, I'll just let you know that there was unanimous support from everybody on the Steering Committee of, we need to, not only do we need to continue this program, but we continue to have a need for a program coordinator to do this. And so, that was the, and again, all of that documentation was in your package for review. The, in addition to the, the position description, which needs some work, I worked with legal counsel for the new language. Position description is fairly accurate, there's some things we need to tweak on that, and there's also some additional work, cleaning up some paperwork on the MOUs and resolutions, and that's work ahead of us. So, I think the, the important thing is to, and I'm, I'm certain I'm not complete with this assignment, but to revalidate with our board to be the fiduciary and the holder of the contract, all the other things that are essentially in place with some, some minor twinkling. And I think the, the thing I will leave you with before we get to the recommendation is that, you know, this is, Commissioner, or now Commissioner Chang remembers this, 10 years ago, we sent a commissioner back to DC that secured the, the Deschutes Collaborative. Now, a lot of work went into that, and when Commissioner Younger went back to DC, we were way down on the totem pole in terms of priorities, and we told Commissioner Younger, "Don't come back unsuccessful." And he came back successful, meaning we got financing for about 10 million bucks, and then some. And that's going to continue thereafter, and I think for a five-year extension on that. And so, what I told Commissioner Younger, I said, you know, regardless of whatever you do as a commissioner, that's going to be your legacy, that you were the one that really was the catalyst. And so, what I'm suggesting here is for the collegiate strategy, this is a legacy, this is a leadership moment for our board to continue, not only for our county, but for the other counties or other stakeholders. It's a, it's just an important thing to do. I will also share with you that with the change in administrations, there's some really exciting things out there, a document called Climate 21. And now, we actually have a, a, an outline of the program. The Forest Service intends to do for the next 10 years, $50 billion over the course of that time, some of that off-budget, to treat 4.3 million acres annually to create resilient landscapes. And so, that's part of the Western Region and Wolf Lake and all the other stuff. And so, there's exciting things coming along those lines. And so, I think the only other piece of information that would need to get cleaned up is that Lake County has been part of this from the beginning. They wish to continue to be part of the coordination, the collaboration with the new commissioner, Barry Schulenberger, that some of us know very well. But their contribution was $2,250, a very small piece, and they want to continue to collaborate, but we'll, would reduce the overall amount by $2,000 with no additional request of the, the people providing, we'd stick with whatever that would be. So, the recommendation is to revalidate the Living with Fire program. The coordinator will use the existing Request for Proposal, that's, I worked with legal counsel to change the language on that to reflect the new title, and, and then fill the program coordinator position, you know, using the, the RFP program, and again, understanding that there's some homework to do with the resolutions and MOUs that, you know, that I'll be responsible for as we proceed, if in fact, the, the board, you know, revalidates this. And so, with that, I'll open it up for questions.
I have some questions, Joe. I did some research, looking last night at the Central Oregon Collegiate Strategy Initiative in September of 15. They have a list of supporters, stakeholders, and I've been attending some of the BIC meetings for the Blue Mountains, and they have actually have three tribes in that group. But if you look back at this document from 2015, Warm Springs is listed. And I know, especially after last summer's fire, Lions, Lionshead, Lionsgate, you know, how that burned, and then it burned, and then it took off, and it went over, you know? I'm wondering why wasn't Warm Springs part of the Steering Committee? I would have thought that they would be someone we definitely would want to participate. I mean, it's been great, because they're participating in the BIC, and Bobby Bruno was taking, and I believe, I'm not sure who's doing it at this moment, but, you know, Bobby's definitely been there, and I would think we would want to add them in. And then, there seems to be the committee itself, some people have term expiration, some don't, and some were never filled, and I would think we would want to fill those other positions. I don't know. I mean, just if you're, you know, if somebody's taking it over, those are just kind of some holes that I saw, and I thought, wow, but not having Warm Springs here represented? I, I just thought that, maybe, you know, maybe there's a history there that I don't know, but I thought it could be extremely worthwhile addition.
Well, first, thanks for reading that document. You're doing your homework, I'm very proud of you, thank you for that. So... So here's the, here's the deal.
Get a gold star for her.
Yeah, absolutely. So here's the deal, so we, when we, when we first, first started this whole thing, it was clear that Warm Springs should be. I took four trips to Warm Springs. I visited with Bobby, I visited with the Fire Management Officer, Trey, and others, and they said, you know, we support this, but we just don't want our name formally, you know, on this. And I said, fair enough. And I suggested that there were a lot of opportunities, there were things that Warm Springs was doing that could be, you know, a part of the, the COEZA strategy implementation. In fact, because of the tribal, you know, their jurisdictional status and all the other stuff, I said, there's some real advantages to leverage that. And Bobby and Trey agreed, said, well, we just, we do not want to formally participate, but keep sending this stuff. So in the email, Bobby and Trey continued to get it. When we had our meeting on February the 19th, I think Commissioner DeBohm will remember this, we, we took a look, and it gets to the other positions. We've got some great opportunities with the Extension Service, we'll make another run at Warm Springs to see if they're still enlisted, because it'd be great to include the boundary of the Warm Springs, you know, tribe. We'll continue to ask, and, but we-
I actually drove down to, or drove north to Warm Springs and personally delivered an invitation for them to join the BEC, because they needed him at the table. And so, but I would think, you know, that was like a year and a half ago. I would think now perhaps that they would really consider being at the table. I think it's-
If you had success when I make the trip, maybe we'll go together, and maybe you can perhaps be more convincing than I was, so it was-
Well, why not?
Yeah, why not? Welcome back. But no, we, we talked about, and if you'll look towards the end of the notes of the February 19th, we actually have a list of people, the Extension Service, Warm Springs, there's some others that we think to round out, because originally we had, I think it was 16 positions of the, you know, for the steering committee. I think we got up to 12, and for a variety of reasons, it just stalled. And, but it needs some new energy, it needs some new life, and we, we think that, we think that we can get to 16. We have people that, I know of at least five people that have expressed interest to me that would fit in those categories, that they would love to serve on the steering committee. And it's a diverse group, and so I agree with you, Commissioner, that we need to put that out, and Warm Springs would be one of the, one of the ones we'd go to. Thank you.
Well, I just, that was just something that I saw. So you have 16, including your coordinator.
Correct.
So, yeah.
You bet. Fishers?
Well, I wanted to kind of pull it up to like a higher level question of, you know, what is the cohesive strategy mean in Central Oregon? And, you know, having worked in the, in the realm of forest management and, and, you know, wildfire risk reduction for a number of years, I actually have a, I do have some thoughts of my own about this. And, you know, I wrote down a few notes. So in my mind, the cohesive strategy is, is a very important national network, and it has provided inspiration and coordination and shared learning, you know, and catalyzed things in so many parts of the country, and that's really exciting. And I am really glad that a representative of Deschutes County is, is providing key leadership there, and, and keeping us connected to that national network, tracking opportunities. What I, what I'm challenged by, or, you know, what I scratch my head about is, what does the cohesive strategy mean to Central Oregon? And, and I want us to think carefully about how the cohesive strategy and investment in the cohesive strategy can provide value added here in Central Oregon. We have so many local efforts who are doing important work, the Project Wildfires, the Schuets Collaborative Forest Projects, the Klamath Lake Forest Health Partnerships, Joint Chiefs Partnerships, and we, you know, the Ochko Forest Collaborative, and we, we label this work as cohesive strategy work. But these, you know, if the cohesive, if we didn't have a national cohesive strategy, these people would still be doing that work. They would, they would, they would, you know, still be very concerned about wildfire and their forests and their community. So, so, you know, I, I, I feel like oftentimes the cohesive strategy is, in the, the relationship of the cohesive strategy to these groups is, you know, showcasing their work. You know, it's like, hey, you know, look at all the great stuff we're doing in Central Oregon, and we are doing great stuff. But I also, I, I, as much, as important as it is to showcase what we're doing and to keep us connected to this national network, I also think that there are real opportunities to provide added value to these local efforts. And, and so when I was looking at the scope of work, and I saw things like, you know, well, there's, you know, communications work, and website work, and grant writing work, and things like that, I would really like to see the contractor that we get into place providing support services to the local efforts. So not just, you know, communicating about the cohesive strategy, but, you know, for example, maybe the Deschutes Collaborative has lacked a, an outreach chair, their outreach committee has lacked a chair for, you know, more than a year now, since Nicole Strong, you know, graduated to a higher level of extension office. So, you know, could we ask, if we're going to hire a skilled communications expert, could that person actually not just monitor the Deschutes Collaborative, but I, but when they go to those meetings, you know, have a role and have a contribution to make? Similarly for grant writing, you know, you can write grants for the cohesive strategy, or you can write grants, you know, for the Klamath Lake Forest Health Partnership project that, that is relevant, that is, you know, what everyone would describe as cohesive strategy work. So that's, that's something that I'm particularly interested in, in this kind of, this revise or overhaul, is, you know, how do we have the cohesive strategy provide value, you know, value added for the local efforts, you know, our workhorses basically in the region? And so I, I, I kind of like to see that reflected a little bit more clearly, either in the scope of work, or in kind of the, the descriptive language. So that's, that's, that's a request that I have.
That's, that's great. Let me, let me address that. And so the whole, and first of all, I, I agree with you. You know, the, the program and the coordinator need to have their own identity. They need to lead some stuff versus just being participatory. I think the, what's in it for Deschutes County, what's in it for the greater of this landscape is for not only the agencies, but for the public, the stakeholders, to understand what living with wildland fire is going to mean. And that's everyone from the sheriff's office to Tollgate, to Deschutes River Woods, to that, that messaging. The, I think the other, and if you look at the notes from the meeting on the 19th, there were similar desires from the steering committee to have that, not only the program, but the person be able to do those kind of things. And so the, the, both the programs of work and the position description, we need to clearly state those deliverables in terms of, that's what we expect, those would be selection or evaluation criteria for the, filling the position, we'd be looking for that skill set. And again, we're, you know, just looking at the, the effort that I put into the Western Regional Strategy Committee, you know, for Alaska, Nebraska, I mean, it's, it's full-time work, full-time work. But what's, what's going on here is, and I think I, I'm pretty sure that I delivered a product last week to what the Western Regional Strategy Committee has been doing, you know, for 2020. The work that's going on here in Central Oregon has not and will not go unnoticed for the other regions, Wolf Lake, and, you know, the agencies within Wolf Lake. But what so often happens, if we, let's take the collaborative, we'll take the Central Oregon Stewardship Group that's there, the Good Neighbor Authority, those kind of things, those seem to be just, we call it in the, in the industry, fire talk and the fire. We have, you know, natural resources talk and natural resources, and we fail to connect the dots in terms of why we're doing this. And so that's at least my vision, Commissioner, on what we should be doing. What is the message? For example, I could take this and make a one heck of a cohesive strategy message on this, and why the county and how the county is meeting the intent of the, you know, the COEZA strategy, what their goals and objectives. That person needs to connect those dots, as I think Forest Supervisor Shane Jeffrey said, we need a convener that can bring those together. And so if it's, if it's grant writing, if it's, you know, helping those entities that is part of the program, we simply need to put that down as a selection evaluation. And I, I agree with you, that, those things need to happen, and, you know, we had the opportunity for a new coordinator, we have an opportunity with, you know, the administration of the contract, and, you know, Commissioner DeBohm is on the steering committee, and when, hey, this is how this looks like, we bring it to the steering committee, they go, that's exactly what we're looking for, let's move this along. So along the winded, I agree with you. Yeah, yeah.
Great.
So a couple of thoughts, yeah, this is a recommitment, or, you know, the commitment of proceeding with this position. So it's a, it's a job, a, you know, FTE that's going to be part of this decision process. When I look backwards, I do kind of see a lost year. There's a lot, a lot of good meetings happened, but we want to get small trees chipped up and, and space between the, you know, get the ladder fuels out and all that. I mean, we want the work to be done, as I say, so for COVID and, and, you know, another layer of national election, really, we kind of lost a year, is, is one of the big picture items I see. So then it steps into the vision of, you know, what can we get done here? What's the value? If, and my thought, the first time we dove in is, hey, if the Forest Service is in, I'd be in, you know. So I mean, it kind of, that partnership is the statement when we start. And I think there's opportunity to finish the messaging, or to mature the messaging of Living with Fire, just like some of the terminology you mentioned. We've got a long history of our collaborative. You know, I think of some of the swag that used to pop out for the collaborative, you know, the coasters and the cups and some stuff, and hats, some brochures that were coming out. But that was done in a very positive, hey, we've come up with a solution that we all kind of agree upon, we've really worked hard to get to this spot, now we have some projects on the, on paper that we're going to implement, and now we've even implemented some of those programs. So there's opportunities in there. So as I say, this position I see as the opportunity to complete that messaging, bring more communities in under the umbrella of, we can be resilient in a fire-prone Eastern Oregon, high desert atmosphere with the conditions as they are, and we're going to make them better to the future. So it's all visionary stuff, and that's right where I was at when we had our meeting this last time. But that, you know, puts me in a spot of leaning, leaning into this, you know, let's all act together to, to show that we're moving forwards, you know. It's a realization when you come to the concept that in the Western United States, we've been actively putting out wildland fire for 100 years, which is wonderful, but now we have some consequences to that, too. And lightning strike fire is natural, and it's going to happen every year, and mad-made fire is out there, too. So these are the facts, we've digested them as a community, but, you know, we shouldn't be just fully scared of a, of this issue, we should, you know, do something. Cohesive National is a good way to go, too.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, I thought I heard you say FTE, but just be clear, this is a contract position, the county would hold the contract, it's not a-
Yeah, no, I used that word, but it's a person, I was trying to-
Yeah, you bet.
I mean, it's a person we're committing to, and a partnership with the Forest Service and the other counties, so.
Correct. And I would, the other thing I would suggest is that, an emerging issue, and we see it here in Central Oregon, it's, you know, last year we burnt 10 million acres that we know of, the most since 1910. And so the emerging issue for the collaboratives, the Joint Chiefs, the Good Neighbor Authority, the stewardship, is how we attend to those fire regimes, those altered fire regimes that likely will not return because of climate change. It's a huge issue. It's a huge issue for landscape resiliency, the treatment methods, it's a huge issue for the fire deputy, for fire deputy communities because of the fuel profile, and it's a huge issue for the response, because if you look at the B and B complex in 2003, most of that has reburned in 17 years. That was a fire regime four, which means it's not going to see fire for 200 to 300 years. We reburned almost 93,000 acres in 17 years. Those are the emerging issues that, you know, that collectively we need to be dealing with, not only nationally, but the west of here, but having a voice in, in that conversation. So that's big stuff out there.
And as I say, I mean, having a few people that understand it or have a vision on it is, is valuable, but getting more, you know, the community as a whole to understand, to, to buy in to the fact that we are analyzing it, we are understanding it, and the action is this because we agree upon it. You know, so it's, it's the messaging, it's the big picture. Getting more people involved is, is what I think's going on here.
Agreed. So-
So there's, yeah, it looks like three people leaning into this one, if, you know, this is a reconfirmation that we're going to proceed with this partnership.
Yep.
Are we, and what are-
So the next steps, Commissioner?
Yeah, I mean, because I, I, I would, I would like to see, you know, you've heard about kind of some of my desire to, to memorialize in language, you know, that, the, the kind of additional supportive role that this, this position is going to play with all these local initiatives. And like I, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to figure out for myself right at this moment whether I actually want to see that in the scope of work before we let the, before we let the contract, you know, or before we solicit a contractor, or whether that's something that we can work out later. And I kind of, I would kind of like to see that, I mean-
I have a suggestion. So the, the reality is that the position's been vacant for two and a half months, and I can vouch for, I'm just, just seeing the bits and pieces of it, and we need to get the position advertised, we need to get it on the street, we need to take a look at it. We need to put evaluation criteria that addresses that. We need to have suggestive language and the revision of the program of work and coordinator run by the steering committee, because this is the five county kind of a thing to get a thumbs up, heads up. And I can change the language, I can get it to the steering committee, but we need to get the position advertised, so in fact, we can, can fill it, we can put those languages in, I can run that RFP by our board, particularly you, Commissioner Chang, if you want to see that. But the longer we wait, the, you know, the more behind we get for the kinds of things that they were going to do. That's my suggestion, and I'm fine with doing that, and also, once I know we've got a position coming, I'm fine with revising the MOUs and the, you know, the memorandums, that's stuff that's, you know, fairly easy to do. But that's, I believe, a suitable outcome. Again, it's, this is, position is for, you know, five counties, we got four other people, five other people, our agencies are contributing to this, and ultimately, this position works for that steering committee, for a bunch of others. But there's no reason that your concerns can't be in the RFP, there's no reason it can't be in the draft program of work, and it can't be in the position description, and be happy to run those, that language by you, if that makes sense to you.
That'd be great.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
So, yeah, on the topic of considering of contracted, looks like it's a go from Deschutes County's point of view, so that's, I don't know that there's a voting item today, just consensus.
That was, I was wondering whether we are actually voting today, or, or whether we're just kind of reviewing this and providing some input.
Any other business?
A couple of things, Commissioners. Number one is, I think it would be useful to have a minutes motion authorized with the amendment suggested moving forward with the RFP, unless you want to see that first and come back to you for another vote, but kind of a formal head nod to go ahead, that would, that would be useful. But before, I'll come back to that in a moment, but I just wanted to say a couple of things. I followed the discussion closely today, and, you know, as you know, we have, we have, there are other programs that we support greatly in Deschutes County. We have a wonderful county forester- We have a wonderful county forestry program with a county forester who does, you know, awesome work. And now we've augmented that with a second FTE in that program to run Support Fire, Project Wildfire, which is another fabulous program that's had tremendous success and a whole lot of stakeholders in our community. And we, Joe and Ed Keith and I have had a number of discussions, and we want to make sure that we're not duplicating efforts, that we're not, we're not getting in each other's lanes, and that was much of the program that, or much of the discussion that we had and, you know, kind of focused on. And if we do this, I mean, there are wonderful reasons to do this. And I heard Commissioner DeBohm, when we were sort of debriefing after the meeting on the 19th, just talking wonderful terms about the networking opportunity and the ability to discuss, you know, areas of mutual interest and concern related, you know, risk reduction wildfire with the other county commissioners. And two federal agencies are part of this, the state's part of this. Just having that forum is great, even if you didn't do anything else. The investment is pretty small from us, given the entry fee, if you will, for all the other entities that it's part of that. So we get a lot for the bang for the buck with that forum. So, you know, pandemic had a real detrimental effect from my observation in the program over the last year and not being able to get people face to face to talk. And so we suffered from that. But I think with, in sort of re-engaging this program with hopefully the, you know, charismatic, engaging individual contractor who could fill that role and follow the scope of work that we can, we can, you know, light a new fire there. And, but all the while, as I said, keeping in mind both roles in terms of not providing overlap, but also, you know, we explored the concept of having a, something that they lead, a program, and a service that other groups that are, you know, have mutual interest in terms of fire and risk reduction, you know, they become cohesive strategy or central Oregon Living with Fire becomes the go-to agency for that particular thing, whether it's communication, whether it's a sport role, grant writing, you know, that we define those as we get into it so that we, you know, it does truly add value in addition to the networking opportunities to all the other groups. And so I think your points are very well taken. So I just wanted to say that, that we're cognizant of the other efforts that are underway that we have done, that we have a lot of success, and that we believe that this, you know, would add to that, not compete with that and not make us less efficient. But, and I think the crafting is going to be in those, the final version of the work scope, the RFP, and, you know, what we actually have this person do. So with that, hopefully that made sense. But a minutes motion or some kind of formal board direction to move forward with this, incorporating the amendments to those documents that we talked about today, to allow us to move forward would be helpful.
And Tom, just in response to your thoughts, I mean, I'd like to say, big picture, we have a massive job. I mean, we're, the area covered by this initiative is millions of acres. There is a lot of fuel, there is a lot of landscape that's, you know, out of whack with historic fire regimes. There are a lot of people, a lot of homes, that need the best chance that they can get to survive wildfire. So I'm very, I just want to kind of frame that to say that I'm very excited about the idea of having, you know, having another member of the team working in the region. And I am less concerned about, you know, duplication or kind of tripping over each other than I am about, you know, how do we get some synergy? You know, how do we, how do we, you know, make the stuff we've got work better? And again, add value to it, you know, kind of, and so those are, you know, if I came in with, you know, kind of some, you know, concerns that I expressed about the scope of work, you know, don't take it as a negative reaction to the, to that whole concept. Take it as a, you know, as a desire to bring on some more capacity and really have them, you know, do great things for us, so.
Actually, it looks like our document that we were just given said that the proposals must be submitted no later than March 1st. So somehow this seems like it's taken longer. And all those positions, the term expirations, I don't know where the clarification is there, but you have that note on the page 97 that says, the MOU says it's going to be 12 members, and yet we have 15 plus the coordinator. So it seems like things have kind of been going on and really, yeah, of course, I want you to be doing the job, but it looks like somebody needs to really tighten up what we're doing. And if you go back and look at it, what have we been paying? I know it's, what, only $34,000? And does that $2,200 from Lake County have to be picked up by the group? No, you're just saying you're going to pay the coordinator less?
Well, the program, I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of $150,000, that will be $2,250, you know, whatever, Lake County's contribution, if you look at the money that was dedicated to the program coordinator, was significantly less than that. So, yeah, and we'll be looking at that, that'll be part of the contract. But Commissioner, you're right, there's some stuff that needs to be tightened up. You know, we had this conversation in, end of January, Tom asked me to revalidate this and start moving this along, and so I'm moving along. The RFP that you saw, that was a draft, and I suggested that we get that on the street. And that's when I received direction from Thompson, says, look, we need to revalidate this with the steering committee and our board to be sure we're solid. So that was just, that was the first shot at that I worked with legal counsel on. So that was just an example of what the RFP looks like. So, yeah.
One of the action items, our deliverables, could be just total acres treated in the partnership footprint, you know, as in, because it's public and private, it's, you know, Forest Service and commercial and, you know, just residential. So I'm just thinking, you know, some of the metrics that we could be looking for here, because then all of a sudden you're building into, you know, ramping up projects.
That's one example. And I would say, is that prescribed fires, that mechanical? Is it everybody? Is it sweat equity? Is it project wildfire? Or is it fire free?
If we have the terminology, all of a sudden we can start saying, yes, oh, yeah, that was prescribed fire acres, or this is mechanically treated acres. So it's terminology also.
That's exactly, that's part of the communication thing, connecting the dots between what everybody's doing, and then you throw it out there. We deal with the smoke issues. So what happens if we create 50,000 acres of landscape resiliency with unplanted niches? So where's that fit in? You know, so that's, you know, some of the challenges with the whole understanding of cohesive strategy, so.
Where's our motion? We'll call it, Deshute County revalidating our partnership in the Oregon Living with Fire program.
I think I'm ready to make a motion, but I don't, I'm lacking the right phrase.
That's why I was trying to use some of the terms just now.
What are, so we're, we're not, we're not moving the contract at this point, but we're moving a, we're, okay. So I move that we revalidate Deshute County's interest and intent to invest in a central Oregon cohesive strategy initiative, now known as Central Oregon Living with Wildfire.
Is it wildfire or just fire?
Oh, sorry, Living with Fire.
Yes, yes, and I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes yes.
But I definitely would try and bring Warm Springs in. I think it could be a perfect time. I mean, we're sitting here and we're talking about all this, but oh my gosh, what did we lose? 4,000 homes in the state? How many millions of acres burned? And the fact that the wind was 70 miles an hour? If that would have started like, you know, east of us, what we could have, we could be, we might not even be sitting here today. So I feel like this group really needs to step it up.
Well, and I'd say Warm Springs is always a partner in any of this, these efforts, you know. So then it's, you know, whose name is on it, who's helping to pay for it is the business end of it. But, I mean, Warm Springs is definitely part of the central Oregon community, and, you know, forest management is part of it.
So let me be clear, I appreciate, well, you haven't voted yet, so I guess, Patty, you need to do that, so.
We just finished it off.
Yeah, so I appreciate the time, appreciate the revalidation, so that, you know, I had to ask Commissioner Chang about the program of work and the position description. That's an easy thing to be inclusive, but what I don't have is a clear signal on whether I can proceed with the RFP to solicit the position. I've got a draft, I need to tweak that a little bit, add some of the deliverables, and get it on the street.
Tom, maybe you could give me some suggestive language for a motion.
That was spot on. That's exactly kind of the one deliverable that I was hoping that your motion would cover. So recognizing that we were going to amend it, and we'll share that with you, but that the one action was that we issue the RFP for the new...
So Deshute County's the contract provider, or, you know, we're the business run into this thing. So that's why they were the entity to put the RFP on the street, so.
Right, we are the contract administrator.
Yeah.
On behalf of the steering committee.
Yep.
So presumably, there would be steering committee involvement in the review of submittals under the RFP and the final selection of the contractor, which could come back to you if you'd like to see it. I think it would be within my authority, but we're happy to share, and, you know, Commissioner DeBohm is our rep, would likely be involved in the review of submittals. But however you'd like to play that forward, we were happy to carry out the board's wishes.
Okay.
But one action was the RFP.
Number two.
Let me try again. Okay, so I move that we, that Deshute County accept the role of contract administrator for this project and move forward with a request for proposal with the revisions to the request for proposal that we've discussed today.
I'll second.
Okay, getting more business-like here. So any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. There you go, you got it.
Well, thank you for your time. Tom, thank you, sir, for that. And we'll move it along.
Well, yeah, this is, you know, the season for people to do work, you know, on private property, you know, post-winter, you know, the spring cleanup season's here. So, yeah, just getting the word out and letting people know that it's time to think about what does it mean to have a little defensible space around your property.
What's interesting is, we had a 456-acre fire yesterday, south of Prescott. Last Friday night, there was a 10-acre fire by Selma, Oregon, after the weather we've had. And there were only three people and one bulldozer to put on it, and they contained that fire. And so that's why we call it a fire year versus a fire season. And so that's, you know, and every prediction that I'm seeing is that 2021 is going to be at least as bad as 2020, if not worse. And if you look at the drought in the west and all of that, we're one wind event or one lightning event away from, you know, doing what we witnessed last September, so even more of the importance of doing something with this. So, but that's predictions in March, and we'll see what happens in December. That's the way the business works. So thank you for your time and attention, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Patty.
And stay away from the mules.
One of my favorite rides.
Sounds like it was.
Yes.
At this time, item number 10, consideration for grant application for Smart Prosecution Initiative. Kathleen Megan Coop.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to present. The district attorney's office is looking for approval to apply for a Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance Grant opportunity that's come available. It's a smart prosecution grant, and our focus of the grant is to use data-driven approaches to help us identify innovative ways to use technology, intelligence, and data to improve our operations within our office, to help modernize our office so that we can better use analytics and technology, and ultimately to increase public safety with a specific focus on rural and violent crime or criminal activity. And so what we're hoping to do with this grant opportunity, because it fits really well with a number of things that we've been trying to achieve, but with this funding, it'll kind of help push our efforts forward at a faster pace, is that we're proposing to bring on two consultants and one temporary FTE for the grant period. The first consultant would be focused on creating what we're kind of coined right at the moment as My Case, which would be an interactive platform for a witness and a victim to be able to gain access to information about their case more readily and easily. It would allow us to be able to communicate better with a lot of our community members that have been a victim of the crime that are in rural areas. And kind of the My Case, if you think of an example similar to the My Chart system that you're using at the doctor's office, but kind of working for that kind of concept for criminal case. Our second consultant would help us to develop some specific best practices and policies and procedures that are relevant right at the moment as our law enforcement agencies are now adopting body cameras as well as dash cameras. And as that technology comes into our office, we are going to need to know how to better store it, better access it, how do we review it, and how do we effectively use it in cases to improve community safety? And so there's a lot going on in places around the country, so we're looking, want to bring on a consultant who has expertise to kind of help guide us in that, so we start off on the best foot possible. And the third piece of the project is the FTE that would be temporary during the time of the grant. And that person would work very closely with our IT department. And Casey's on the call today as well, and he can answer any specific questions. But our goal for that is for, to develop some dashboards so that we can monitor our cases within our office to help with throughput of cases, to ensure that there's equitability within the office on how quickly cases are going through, who's handling more, also to develop some crime mapping. We get a lot of, there are requests within our office to really kind of dive into what are the situations within our office, or our community as a whole as far as crime. And we currently don't have the capacity to do those, but we can develop some different tools and technology that would allow our district attorneys, anybody on staff, to be able to access that information independently. So this IT person would work with our, this IT person we'd be bringing on would work with our current staff to kind of help develop these materials and to ensure that anything that the two consultants develop integrates well into our system. And this way, when they leave that, that position ends, our IT staff would have this capacity and would be able to help support it, but we wouldn't have to do the big development piece that this grant would allow us to do. So those are kind of our primary goals of this grant and how we would use the funding. It's a two-year grant. It will, we're assuming it would start in the fall. The application is due in two parts, one part due in March, and the second, which is kind of the intake form. And then we submit the full proposal in another government grant system at the end of April. And the funding total is about $340,000 over the two years, and we're assuming that the need for those three positions would use all of that funding.
Great, thank you very much for that introduction. Any questions?
Kathleen, I don't think I heard you mention a match requirement for this grant. Is there...
No, there's not.
That's nice.
Yes.
So what do you think our chances are of getting the grant? Do you have any idea?
I think what we're trying to do is really kind of target what we're looking at. So I think based upon the fact that we're, our, the My Case piece is really going to hit upon the issues with rural, we're going to be kind of understand, getting a better picture of what potentially our violent crime situation is in the community, and our goals hit upon their four primary categories, I think our chances are pretty good. We're kind of a small community, I mean, we'll be going up against, you know, major large cities that are probably going to have a really big violent crime issue, but I are probably gonna have a really big violent crime issue, but I think because we're gonna be hitting on a lot of their different topics and really showcasing how that can help improve our functionality as an office, I think is going to increase our chances at acquiring this grant.
Kathleen, how many murder cases do we have outstanding in Deschutes County now?
I'd have to get back to you on that. I don't have an answer to that.
We have 11, which I thought was really significant. I mean, that was a couple of years ago, so I just was wondering where we're at today.
Okay, so, question from myself here. Is this in response to like an effort called Innovative Prosecution Solutions? Is that, is that the starting point of this?
Yes, that's their new grant. It's a smart prosecution grant specifically targeting innovative solutions in prosecutorial offices.
Okay, so, yeah, this is coming up with a, a new, unique idea and, yeah, trying to put some, some effort into it and get it funded. Great.
Correct.
Okay.
So I move on consideration of board signature for the grant application for 2021, for year-end 21, Smart Prosecution Innovative Prosecution Solutions.
And you mentioned board signature. I don't know that we need to sign it, it's just approval of grant.
Okay, well, that you can apply.
Well, I don't, yeah, yep. There we go, just clarity.
And I'm not sure if within the, sorry, if within the application process, if the, we will require board signature actually in that first phase of the application process, which is done through grants.gov.
As long as it's approved, we probably don't need to sign anything.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
So do you second?
But, but very helpful to understand, for example, the, the FTE, human resource implications if you receive this, if you receive this grant, because we'll, we'll need to be thinking about that in, you know, in however many months when, when you guys get this money. I, I second.
Any other discussion?
Well, I just want to know how many murder cases. I hope it's less than 11. Yes. So you're asking for my vote? Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Dare.
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Great project, thank you.
Nice to see you. Without a mask on, isn't it nice to see?
Yeah, without a mask, yep. Item number 11, consideration of grant continuation application for the Office of, Office on Violence Against Women. Drew Moore.
Good afternoon. Can you, can you all hear me okay?
Yes, thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much for having me. My name is Drew Moore. I'm a deputy district attorney for the county. I've been here since 2012. I'm before the commission today to request approval of pursuing this continuation grant. It's a federal grant with the Office on Violence Against Women. We were awarded this grant a little over two years ago, and the primary functions are to hire a centrally located in the district attorney's office investigator to, that focuses on domestic violence crimes, inmate partner domestic violence crimes. It helps fund a high-risk domestic violence team, and it also funds an advocate with Saving Grace that helps victims in high-risk cases, and also provides a screening tool that's evidence-based to determine high-risk domestic violence cases that law enforcement will use out on a scene of a crime. They can connect victims of those high-risk cases with advocates on a 24-hour helpline. This grant that we're currently on runs out in October of this year. The continuation grant, it would be anticipated to start in October of this year. It is a three-year grant. It's $500,000, and, or up to $500,000. We would likely request nearly all of it to cover the positions. There is no match associated with it, and I'm trying to think if there are other areas to address. I believe that's the, the summary. We'd like approval to make that application, to authorize Commissioner DeBois, his chair, to sign documents for that application as needed with prior county legal review. All of those would go to David Doyle for, for review prior to any signatures.
Great.
Well, looking at the number of people that are on parole and the number of people in that category that fit into domestic violence was hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people in Deschutes County. I was really horrified when I saw those numbers, so clearly, I can only hope that we are successful again in getting this grant, because the numbers indicate that there's a serious problem in our society, and too many people are victims.
Andrew, my question was about the, the impact of the, the earlier grant, so this one's a continuation, but can you give us a little bit of a feel for what was accomplished or progress that was made with, with the earlier project?
Sure, so we're still running it. We're in year two. I can give you some, some idea of, you know, referrals to, to our office. In a six-month timeframe, we do semi-annual reports, and, you know, we've received 315 case referrals to our office as, in one six-month period. That's representative of about what they've been filing on, about 228 of those. Our domestic violence investigator would receive about 36 follow-up requests to help shore up investigations in that six-month period as an idea, and our high-risk team would meet, we're meeting about twice a month, and typically there's one to two cases that are staffed as potentially a high-risk offender that poses a risk of serious injury or lethality in those cases. Some of the results, I can, I have, it'll give me a moment. I can give you an idea of, of, of something that went into one of our reports, and this came from a fellow deputy district attorney, and in the form of a, of a email to me of just talking about this team. And this discusses a case where it was a felony domestic violence case. The defendant and the victim had been married about 30 years. The victim had been abused their entire relationship. The defendant had been in and out of jail for, for a number of various things, so there were some domestic violence cases that involved the same victim. On the recent incident that, that this case was concerning, the victim had actually been arrested, and she was arrested because she stabbed the defendant. The follow-up investigation revealed that a few weeks prior, the defendant had strangled this victim three times over a 15-minute period, had been telling her that he was going to kill her, that she was going to die. She had been told on this evening that he was going to kill her. He had grabbed her, threw her down, was going to, was reaching for her throat, and that's when she stabbed him in defense of herself. This case was staffed by our high-risk DB team. Everyone had come together on it. They invested a lot of time with this victim. The DB investigator was amazing and able to get detailed information about other past abuse that we did not have information on, and this made all the difference to, to the victim of that crime, to stay with that prosecution, and it led to more charges, and a successful prosecution where the defendant received a prison sentence, and the victim actually made a statement in court and said that she had heard that the, the domestic violence investigator's words running through her head as she stood up for herself, and was able to finally say enough is enough. And so that's more of a story than example, as well as some numbers, but I think that this has been a successful project and, and one we'd like to continue.
Very powerful story, thank you.
You're welcome.
It is amazing, 30 years, and it's so hard to know that there's a better life out there for you, and, you know, for people to get out of that life. And then I know we actually had someone who was murdered the end of last year. I won't mention her name, but it was another kind of a situation, and, you know, what an incredibly sad outcome for that family.
Thank you very much for the introduction. Is there support or motion?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to move that we approve of board chair signature to this grant proposal continuing, continuing, to continue our work with the Office of Violence Against Women.
And I'll second it, but I do have a question. In purpose area 22, it was regarding cases of missing or murdered Indians, because I know I've read of cases in Jefferson County. Is this anything that Deschutes County would be handling?
Uh, this, this wouldn't be part of this application.
Okay, it sounded like it was put into a special category, so.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you very much for joining us and explaining the big picture.
Very much.
Yes.
And thank you for your work on this.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 12, public hearing on a property line adjustment, intended plan approval, and establishing a 10-lot subdivision. So we've got some paperwork on this. So I have my memo that was printed out. I didn't bring my book down, but now that I've got these maps and the memo, everything, I don't know that I need to go get my book.
And I, I didn't participate in the earlier hearings, and I, I will not be participating in the, in the hearings today, so.
Okay, so, and we didn't provide you a big format map, obviously, already. Okay. Thank you very much. So, this is the time and place set for reconsideration hearing on file number 24719913LL and 24719914TP. Staff will outline the hearing procedures that will be followed.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Kyle Collins, associate planner with the Community Development Department. If you'll bear with me really fast, I'm gonna share my screen to go through the procedures and my staff report. There we go. As the chair mentioned, the Board of County Commissioners in this case will take testimony concerning an appeal of a hearings officer decision and a previous Board of County Commissioners decision which approved a subdivision in the urban area reserve zone. The address for the property in question is 19800 Pacific Heights Road in Bend, Oregon. And the applicants in this case, Scott and Carol Ann Smallwood, are requesting an approval of a series of property line adjustments and an ultimate 10-lot subdivision in the urban area reserve zone. All testimony shall be directed to the hearings body, the Board of County Commissioners in this case, and at the conclusion of the hearing, the Board of County Commissioners will either deliberate towards a decision or continue the hearing or deliberations to a date and time certain. At this point in time, I'll go through the hearing procedures. As this is a reconsideration hearing, it's somewhat unique, but in this case, the general order will be as follows. I, a staff, will provide a brief report. The applicant will then be afforded a chance to present any testimony they have. Any interested persons outside of the applicant will then be afforded a chance to provide testimony. The applicant will then be afforded a rebuttal testimony opportunity if they desire, and then finally, staff will be afforded an opportunity to make any closing comments if the board wishes. As part of the reconsiderations proceedings, the board's decision on this particular application is based upon the initial record, the staff report, and the testimony and evidence presented today at the, at this hearing. On March 1st, the board approved order number 2021008, which set forth procedures for this reconsideration on par with what's described as a record review, which would have been allowed at the initial public hearing for the board pursuant to Deschutes County Code Section 2232027B2. And consistent with the Deschutes County Code governing record reviews and based on that previous board order, at this point in time, the board will not consider any new factual information at this hearing, either submitted in orally or in writing. However, differing from those record review provisions, the board will entertain any brief oral arguments presented by a party of interest. And in addition, staff will introduce materials that were originally excluded from the record before the board during the initial public hearing proceedings. As this hearing is being conducted partially through Zoom, I'll go through those procedures now. Any Zoom participants at this time are either identified as panelists or attendees. Panelists, such as ourselves, are on video, and attendees can only view the panelists. And at the start of the meeting, all microphones are, are muted to prevent feedback. At the start of the hearing, the panelists are board and county staff only, and the attendees are the applicant, general public, the media, and any other interested parties. The board and county staff will provide the opening statement, which we've gone through portions of. Staff will then present a report and answer any questions from the board, and then we'll move on to the public or any interested party testimony. As we're doing this partially through a remote option, there is no sign-in sheet for remote testimony, so at the beginning of any statements, please provide your name and your mailing address, and clearly state any procedural objections you might have, if any, to the hearings process that's being conducted at this time. The order for testimony will be the applicant and any interested parties. During the applicant's testimony, they'll be elevated from attendee to panelist, give a brief presentation and oral testimony in this case, and then they will be returned to attendee status. For public testimony, any interested parties would again be accepting public testimony in the following order. One is any attendees that might be participating in person at this time. The second will be attendees participating by computer, and then lastly, any attendees participating by phone. For the computer attendees, as with the applicant, during their testimony, they'll be elevated to attendee status. They'll provide the testimony, and then they'll be returned to attendee status, and the next person is selected until all those that are participating by a computer have testified. For telephone attendees, the last four digits of the attendee's phone number are announced. That individual will then be elevated to a panelist and answer whether or not they wish to provide testimony. If not, they're returned to attendee status, and if they do, they can provide that testimony, and then they are returned to attendee status. The next person is selected, again with the last four digits of their phone number, and the process repeats until all those participating by telephone have testified. After interested party testimony, the applicant, as the party bearing the burden of proof, will be afforded an opportunity to present brief rebuttal testimony, and then again, if requested by the board, staff can provide closing comments. Pursuant to board order 2021008, as referenced earlier, no new written evidence shall be afforded to any participating party during the hearing process at this time. And that is the conclusion of the, the Zoom procedures themselves. A full written version of these hearing procedures is available in the Barnes and Sawyer room, at the table on the side of the room if desired, and at this time, the commissioners must disclose any ex parte contacts, prior hearing observations, biases, or conflicts of interest.
Does any commissioner have anything to disclose, and if so, please state the nature of same and whether you can proceed?
I have no conflict.
I have no conflict either.
All right, I'll move forward with the staff report. So both of the.
Another half a step. Does anybody wish to challenge the commissioners? So, yeah, during the, yeah, so that'll be available. I mean, and I think that was also the concept of this, you know, anybody that wants. I mean, and I think that was also the concept of this, you know, anybody that wants to challenge this whole procedure. So if anybody wants to testify on that, they will be able to, so. But yeah, please provide a briefing, a staff report at this time.
Thank you, Commissioners. So both participating Commissioners have seen a lot of this information before at the original public hearing. So a lot of this will be retreading the old ground, but I think it'll help put everything in context. So again, this is the subject property in question. It's at 19800 Pacific Heights Road. It's on the northwestern side of the city of Bend. It's accessed by Pacific Heights Road through its southeastern corner. You can kind of see it down there. And it's adjacent to the Deschutes River Canyon along its western boundary. As I stated earlier, the present application by the applicant is for a series of two property line adjustments and a subsequent 10-lot subdivision. The property is currently 100 acres in size, and after the adjustments, it'll be increased by a tenth of an acre. The 10-lot subdivision would ultimately create 10, just over 10-acre lots. And access to the subdivision would continue to be provided by Pacific Heights Road, an extension of Pacific Heights Road, and then a new loop road through the center of the property. That's tentatively described as Juniper Rim Loop. Here is an overview of the two proposed property line adjustments, both of which are affected by properties just south of the subject lot. And again, each is providing roughly just over a twentieth of an acre with a tenth of an acre being included. This is the tentative plan proposal for the subdivision from the applicants. As you can see, there's an extension of Pacific Heights Road in the southeastern corner. And then the loop road through the center is the proposed Juniper Rim Loop. Some background information on the zoning of the property. As I stated earlier, it's located in the urban area reserve zone, which has a minimum 10-acre minimum lot size. It's somewhat unique in Deschutes County. It's a part of our Title 19 versus our Title 18 areas, which govern most properties in the county. And these were areas that were originally slated to be pulled into the city of Bend's urban area, but have since been held by the county until that time occurs. Some zoning that's adjacent to the property that does not affect this proposal, as it doesn't affect Title 19 areas, is the landscape management combining zone. You can see here to the west of the property. Does affect those Title 18 areas, but not the subject lot. The same is true of our surface mining impact area combining zone. Again, affects those Title 18 areas just north and west of the property, but not the subject parcel. There was a previously existing runway on site associated with a private airstrip. This has actually been slated to be removed by the applicant as part of the subdivision process. And they've actually submitted a proposal to remove that with the Federal Aviation Administration at this point in time. Some procedural history for the application in question. It was originally referred to a public hearing before a Deschutes County Hearings Officer on June 30th of 2020. And a decision was made by the hearings officer which approved that decision. And that final decision was mailed on August 14th of 2020. And the applicant ultimately appealed the hearings officer decision on August 26th and requested specifically that the Board of County Commissioners evaluate certain conditions of approval that were included in that decision. After a public hearing before the Board on November 9th, the Board affirmed the hearings officer's decision on January 25th of this year, but altered one specific included condition of approval that deals with design review for the Deschutes River Corridor, which I'll go into in more detail in a second here. And then subsequently, a notice of intent to appeal the Board's decision to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals was filed on February 9th of this year. As part of the record preparation for the Land Use Board of Appeals' appeal, county staff became aware that four specific documents were mistakenly excluded from the Board's record during the initial public hearing. And to resolve any procedural issues, on February 16th of this year, staff filed a notice of withdrawal halting the Luba appeal and allowing the Board to reconsider its previous decision, which is why we stand here today. All parties withstanding in this particular matter, including the applicant and appellant, received notice of the reconsideration proceedings, and those notices were mailed out on March 1st of this year. Some key issues that came up in both the initial Board hearing as well as the hearings officer hearing dealt with the orderly development and preservation of certain natural features and resources on the property, maintenance requirements for Pacific Heights Road, road access to neighboring parcels which could be divided, stubbed, road construction and some cul-de-sac establishment for some of the proposed streets, bicycle and pedestrian connections to what are described as neighborhood activity centers, and then finally, development standards within the Deschutes River Corridor. I'm only going to focus on two of these items today. Those are the maintenance requirements for Pacific Heights Road and the development standards within the Deschutes River Corridor. The remaining issues were actually resolved through the hearings officer decision itself. And at this point in time, no other challenges have been made based on those specific standards. Discussing the Deschutes River Corridor design standards. The Deschutes County Code, Section 1976090 specifically requires that any new development that occurs within what's described as the Deschutes River Corridor is subject to a design review process. And the Deschutes River Corridor is specifically defined as any property within 100 feet of the ordinary high watermark of the Deschutes River. And the ordinary high watermark itself is defined as the highest line on the bank or shore of the lake, river, or stream to which the water ordinarily rises annually in any given season. The hearings officer's response to this criteria through the initial public hearing was interpreted in light of 1976090, which states that the setback for any new development that occurs within these areas is a minimum of 100 feet from the ordinary high watermark, unless the applicant can demonstrate a lesser setback is warranted due to certain characteristics, things like lot size, topography, natural vegetation on site, et cetera. So given those standards, the hearings officer found that it was unclear what the drafters of this particular section of code may have meant by including a provision which does require site plan review or design review for those areas while also prohibiting nearly all development without a specific variance request within that 100-foot setback distance. And they ultimately concluded that it must have been intended for any and all properties which are at least partially within the Deschutes River Corridor, rather than those specific areas that are exactly within 100 feet of the ordinary high watermark. With that interpretation in mind, the hearings officer included a condition which required designer view through that process outlined in that portion of Deschutes County Code for certain lots in the proposed subdivision, lots 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8. Here's an overview of the lots that would have been affected by that condition of approval as outlined by the hearings officer. So as you can see, nearly all of them have some portion of their lots partially within the Deschutes River Canyon. The applicant specifically disputed that interpretation in their appeal to the Board of County Commissioners. And they specifically reiterated that the language itself calls out that "design review for any new development is required within the Deschutes River Corridor itself." And specifically, the Deschutes River Corridor again is all property within 100 feet of the ordinary high watermark of the Deschutes River. Given those specific definitions, the applicant claimed that the hearings officer incorrectly and implicitly amended the language of the Deschutes County Code to state that any new development would be subject to design review for lots that are partially within the Deschutes River Corridor, rather than the language itself as written in code. And they argue that that interpretation ignores the plain reading of the code and requested that the Board strike what was originally defined as condition EE from the hearings officer decision. The applicant also pointed out that the topography of the Deschutes River Canyon on the subject property effectively prevented any development within 100 feet of the ordinary high watermark. And they pointed out that development is not entirely prohibited within 100 feet of the river in this particular case. And there are provisions that do allow exceptions to those standards if certain criteria can be met, which again goes to specifically a variance request to those setback requirements. After some additional research into the language and the drafting of this particular section of code, staff was unable to locate any specific legislative history which provided additional insight into the intent or how it should be interpreted. And staff points out that if the Board concurs with the hearings officer's findings and maintains the site plan review condition, again, condition EE, the Board should provide some additional clarity on that review in a few different ways. The first of which is the review body, which should evaluate those site plan proceedings as outlined currently in that section of Deschutes County Code, 1976090. Again, designer view is intended to be undertaken by the Bend Urban Area Planning Commission or the Planning Director in accordance with the Title 19 and Title 22 standards. However, the Bend Urban Area Planning Commission is no longer a functional or active review body, and something would ultimately need to be put in its place if designer view were required for any of these lots. Secondarily, there are no county comprehensive plan goals or policies that apply to the subject property as it specifically relates to site plan review standards, which is different than some of the site plan review standards in our Title 18 areas. And ultimately, the Board would need to provide some additional detail and direction into what type of governing policies would ultimately need to direct the review process itself. So there is no kind of bedrock principle in terms of how designer view, what is the ultimate goal for designer view within these Title 19 areas. And lastly, staff points out that there are very little objective standards as provided in the currently written code language to define how either the Bend Urban Area Planning Commission or whatever appropriate review body was chosen should address design and site plan review elements. And that ambiguity comes to the forefront when discussing things like the compatibility with an existing area, which defines a very broad range of possible categories which could be considered when pursuing development in these lots. Things like the relationship of the proposed development to the existing surroundings, the height, location, separation distances from other properties or developments, parking areas, lighting, visual and physical corridors to the river, and any adjacent land uses. So as you can see, there's quite a broad range of things that could ultimately be pulled into designer view without any specific direction into what things should be considered. Given the wide latitude of interpretations of those standards, staff would point out that the Board should be aware that regardless of what is proposed, any future development on these properties that are affected by designer view may struggle to accurately establish a burden of proof that shows how those standards can be met. And if the Board decides that designer view standards should apply in these particular cases, they should recognize that the discretionary standards could impede future development plans by the applicant or future property owners. If the Board maintains the site plan review condition, the applicant has requested, however, that condition EE at least be amended to only apply to lots 4, 5, and 6 of the tentative plan. And that specific amendment is based on the applicant's survey and design information, which shows that only those three parcels actually contain land within 100 feet of the ordinary high watermark of the Deschutes River. And again, here's an overview of what that amended condition and the designer view would apply in terms of those three lots. If the Board concurs with the applicant's findings in this particular case and removes that site plan review condition, they should be aware that that interpretation will apply to all properties within Title 19 areas, which again are Bend urban reserve areas, and is not unique to the subject property. And as such, site plan review would only be applicable moving forward for applicants who specifically have requested an exception to the 100-foot setback standards of DCC 1976090. In the previous public hearing and Board discussion, on January 25th during that initial Board decision, the Board broadly concurred with the hearings officer decision, but ultimately did amend condition EE, which addressed the standards of the Deschutes River Corridor designer view. And they found that designer view should only be applied to development that's proposed in this subdivision and in all of our Title 19 areas subsequently, which occur within 100 feet of the ordinary high watermark of the Deschutes River, rather than for properties which only have portions of their land within 100 feet of the ordinary high watermark. Moving on to the second major issue brought up at the initial public hearing regarding road maintenance. Deschutes County Code, Section 1716105 regarding road maintenance for rights of way that provide access to any land that's proposed for subdivision. And it specifically calls out that no subdivision can be approved unless it is already accessed by a road that's constructed to county standards and with a maintenance responsibility that's been accepted either by a local or state government or assigned to landowners or a homeowners association by a covenant or agreement. In this particular case, the subject property is, again, I stated, accessed by Pacific Heights Road, which currently has a maintenance agreement that's undertaken by the Pacific Cascade Heights Homeowners Association, which is due east, concerns the properties due east of the subject lot in this instance. Through the public hearing process, a neighboring property owner to the subject property, Ed Elkins, who owns two lots just south of the subject lot, asked the Board to adopt a finding that was missing from the appeal decision that did not require the Smallwoods to maintain Pacific Heights Road in the Pacific Cascade Heights subdivision because of a maintenance of the road that was assigned to the Pacific Cascade Heights Homeowners Association by a maintenance covenant. This was a fairly confusing issue. I don't know if the Board remembers when this initially came up, but ultimately, this came to light because the maintenance covenant that was originally signed and recorded by the Pacific Cascade Heights subdivision homeowners association, excuse me, contained a termination clause. And it specifically, oops, excuse me, specifically outlined that the homeowners association could abandon maintenance responsibilities for the existing portion of Pacific Cascade Heights Road if any party outside of the HOA ultimately utilized that right-of-way to access another portion of land. So in this case, the applicants, as owners of land outside of the HOA, if they began using that road to access a portion of their property, the currently recorded maintenance covenant would actually allow Pacific Cascade Heights to abandon their maintenance responsibilities and dissolve that portion of the covenant moving forward if they so elected. In this case, Ed Elkins was fearful that something very similar would happen under the current subdivision proposal and would affect his two lots. Again, these are the two lots owned by Ed Elkins to the south of the subject property, that's lots 601 and 503. And it was specifically brought up to the hearings officer themselves, noting, however, that the subject property is currently accessed by Pacific Heights Road, and it currently has a maintenance responsibility which has been accepted by the Pacific Cascade Heights HOA. And the specific, regardless of the termination clause, the specific language of the Deschutes County Code only suggests that a property currently be accessed by a road developed to county standards and has maintenance responsibilities at that time, both of which are true in this particular case. They, in discussing these particular standards, the hearings officer made the finding that they would not condition the approval of the subdivision for the tentative plan on Pacific Cascade Heights Homeowners Association and the applicant making some type of agreement to resolve that termination clause and the currently recorded maintenance agreement. And they noted that no appeals of the hearings officer findings in this regard have been made either by the applicant, the Pacific Cascade Heights HOA, or any other interested parties at this time. And at this point, staff relies on the hearings officer's findings regarding DCC 1716105, unless it is altered or interpreted differently by the Board during this hearing. In the previous Board's decision on this file, the Board broadly concurred, again, with the hearings officer decision on this matter, including condition N, which specifically addressed road maintenance responsibilities for the applicants. And while the Board understood the concerns raised by Ed Elkins regarding any future road maintenance responsibilities and the possibility of something coming to pass like a termination clause and the included road maintenance for the extension of Pacific Heights Road, it didn't believe that this present application was the appropriate venue for resolution of those topics. The Board ultimately found in its decision that all matters regarding the specific road maintenance duties for any property owners in this area. maintenance duties for any property owners in this area should ideally be addressed as a private matter between all parties to arrive at some amenable solution. And ultimately, it found that the resolution of those concerns did not require county intervention at this point, as none of the users of the road were precluded from addressing the situation privately. Ed Elkins also has the ability to apply for some more formal administrative determination or declaratory ruling from the county to specifically address this issue, but at this time, they have not applied for for something. Moving on to the last item here today, which involved the excluded record materials, which were mistakenly not included in the board's packets during the initial public hearing. There were four items that were originally excluded. And all of those items were associated with the open record period before the Deschutes County hearings officer. The first item was a post-hearing submission from Michael McGeehan, who is the legal counsel for the primary opponents to the proposed development. It included a general overview of items that were originally presented to the Deschutes County hearings officer and included discussion of things like the preservation of natural features on site, including the Deschutes River Canyon Rim as it relates to certain provisions in Deschutes County Code, specifically Deschutes County Code 1716100. The proposed covenants and deed restrictions that are proposed by the applicants to preserve natural features on site. The designer view standards associated with the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department, who manages Tumalo State Park, which is adjacent to the subject lot. And then finally, the designer view standards are the Deschutes River Corridor, as we discussed earlier, in the Deschutes County Code Section 1976090. The second, oh, go ahead.
I have a question. That document, the letter dated December 11th, 2019, from Oregon Parks and Recreation. Because it was supposed to commence December of 19 and be done December of 2020, they were going to need an extension. Do I dare ask, did we see that extension? Or did they, did they actually accomplish what they were supposed to do for the approval? And I believe it was, you know, it's only for like roads, nothing else had a proposed road development and utilities is approved at this time for this document. And I'm, I'm wondering, did they have to get that extended?
I, I, that I don't know, Commissioner. I would assume that they did have to pursue an extension with Oregon Parks and Recreation. I don't know that they have provided that extension to us at this point in time. I know that they haven't begun construction, for example, obviously, of the proposed infrastructure, either the roads or utilities associated with that initial proposal. And then ultimately, that that approval from OPRD actually came in right around the same time that the the subdivision request itself was actually submitted to Deschutes County. So this, that late 2019 date is actually when this original file came before the county, and so it was done well in advance of receiving a formal approval from Deschutes County for the subdivision itself.
Thank you. That was just my, I was just curious.
Of course. The second excluded item was a post-hearing submission from Laura Cooper, who is the legal counsel for the applicants in this case. Again, it includes a general overview of items that were presented to the Deschutes County hearings officer. One was a discussion, one item was a discussion of a private airstrip. Again, I mentioned earlier that's located on the subject property. And the applicant specifically stated that that airstrip is both no longer functioning, and they have presented a notice of airport deactivation that was submitted to the Federal Aviation Administration in this particular case. Another item was bicycle access to surrounding state parklands and similar public amenities. The road maintenance obligations for the existing portions of Pacific Heights Road, which access the subject property, which I went into in detail earlier. Access to adjacent land, which is owned and operated as part of Tumalo State Park. Road access to neighboring tax lot 601, which again is owned by Ed Elkins, and it's located south of the subject property. And then finally, a discussion of the preservation of natural features on site, things like the rimrock areas associated with the Deschutes River Canyon. The third item was a post-hearing submission by Liz Fancher, who is the legal counsel for the Elkins family revocable trust, more specifically Ed Elkins in this case. It included an overview of items that were presented to the Deschutes County hearings officer and specifically went into details regarding the road maintenance obligations for those existing portions of Pacific Heights Road, which access the subject property, as well as any future road maintenance obligations for the proposed extension of Pacific Heights Road. It also discussed road access to neighboring tax lot 601 owned by Ed Elkins in this particular case. And then finally, a general correction to a letter which was originally submitted to county staff on June 30th, the date of the original Deschutes County hearings officer, public hearing. The last item was a submission from Bridget Tinsley, the program coordinator for our, oops, excuse me, our region's Oregon Scenic Waterways Program for the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department. And as Commissioner Dare already brought up, that submission included an approval from OPRD for the Smallwoods to construct infrastructure for the initial development of the 10-lot subdivision. It outlines certain conditions of approval associated with development of that infrastructure. Again, that includes things like the roads and utilities for the subdivision, but no specific dwelling considerations. And it outlined a condition that any development on separate lots is actually subject to individual Oregon State and Scenic Waterway notification with OPRD. So every time a, a specific development is built on one of these ultimate lots, it would also be required to go through its its own individual approval process with Oregon Parks and Rec. Those were the the final four items that were originally excluded in the the board's record. Based on the notice of withdrawal to Luba in this particular case, the board has 90 days to either reissue the same decision or to render a new decision based on this new evidence. And the final day, therefore, that the board has to render a decision is May 17th of this year. This is my contact information, and at this point in time, I will open it up to any questions from the board.
Mr. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And Commissioner Derek, this is Peter Gatawski, Deschutes County Planning Manager. Would you mind if I just supplemented Kyle's remarks just as you prepare for reopening the hearing?
Sure, please.
Kyle, thank, thank you, provided, and I appreciated the kind of detailed overview of of the, of the land use case and really were revisiting, reconsidering that that prior proceeding. As he noted in his memo, for today's public hearing, as you get ready to open that, the parties that have been involved will have an opportunity, opportunity to prevent, present oral testimony. But no new evidence, both orally or in writing, will be, will be allowed. And so what what staff, I think, is looking for, again, Kyle noted that there's no rush in terms of when a decision ultimately has to be rendered. But the question for the board today, after you hear from the the parties, is whether you want to close the hearing. And then if you do today, this afternoon, whether you would be comfortable deliberating to determine if the information that was accidentally excluded from the prior proceeding changes the the decision that you made previously. And if, based on that answer, you would then, you could direct staff to then return with a written decision that we could turn around relatively quickly for your consideration. So just want to echo these remarks to put the board in a, in a position to, if you're comfortable, putting, it puts all of us in a position to render a decision relatively quickly, knowing that we're mindful of the fact that this application may likely continue to go on to the Land Use Board of Appeals, and we're just mindful of of the costs that are being borne by by all the parties in this current proceeding. So thank, thank you for letting me just provide that recap. And again, whatever we can do to assist you in in making that decision or providing that direction at the close of the hearing, please let us know.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for staff or the presentation provided?
No, I already have my questions.
Okay. Thank you very much for that overview. At this time, this is a public hearing on this reconsideration matter. And are there requests to speak by the applicant? Okay, so we're bringing some folks in now, possibly. Laura Cooper, representing the applicant. Okay. Thank you very much for joining us. We do see you now.
Hi, I lost you for a second while I think I was being changed to a panelist. Am I up?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Thank you very much. For the record, my name is Laura Craska Cooper. I am with Brick's Law. I represent Scott and Carol Ann Smallwood. And my mailing address is 15 Southwest Colorado Avenue, Suite 3, and that is Bend 97702. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak, Commissioners. For the reasons that I set forth in the prior hearing and also our written submittals, we ask that you affirm the decision that you made on December 16th, which was reflected in the decision that you mailed out on January 25th of this year. We're talking today, obviously, about the Deschutes River Corridor and specifically the design review provisions under 1976. And I think perhaps the most important thing is that the text of the Deschutes County Code in 1904040 defines the Deschutes River Corridor as all property that is within 100 feet of the ordinary high watermark. It does not say any property that has any portion of land within the Deschutes River Corridor is, is subject to the Deschutes River Corridor. And, or is part of the Deschutes River Corridor. And then we look at 1976090, and that specifically says that all new development within the Deschutes River Corridor is subject to the design review process. As, as I just identified, any land that's outside of the Deschutes River Corridor should not be subject to a design review process. Now, as you already heard, I've said before, so I won't belabor the point too much, but Kyle talked about it a little bit, too. The hearings officer didn't see it this way. The hearings officer thought that because there's a 100-foot setback in 1976090, then the designer view provisions were wholly irrelevant because if there were never going to be improvements within the 100 feet, then there's no need for the Deschutes River Corridor. Or if the Deschutes River Corridor is limited to 100 feet and there's a 100-foot setback, then there would never be a need for the design review guidelines or design review process to kick in. But in fact, if you look, there are two situations, I think, when the design review is applicable. And that is if you seek an exemption from the 100-foot setback, as Kyle mentioned, that would occur if you have topographical features or something with the configuration of your lot that necessitates that. And the other situation is the code 1976090 specifically talks about land that falls within an area described in the code. And so presumably, any land outside of that is not subject to the 100-foot setback. Now, Kyle had pointed out in his staff report that he does not believe there's any land that does fall outside of the area described in the code. But there's a lot that we don't know because as the staff report addresses, this code is really kind of leftover. A lot of the stuff that gave it context is gone. So for instance, part of this code says that it's to protect the values identified in the Bend Area General Plan, you know, comp plan policies. But those don't apply to this land anymore. It also, as you know, talks about the Bend Area, the Bend Urban Area Planning Commission will review through designer, the design review process. But there is no such body anymore. So I think that it's fair to assume that at some point, there probably was some land that was created that was not subject to the 100-foot setback. So I maintain, I think there are still two times when this code was designed, when it would not apply, when the setback wouldn't apply, and therefore, design review would be appropriate. So I also, I think that the plain language of the code is is clear that design review only applies to that portion of your land that is within 100 feet of the high watermark of the Deschutes River. And it's pretty clear from looking at a map on our property that only three lots even have some portion within the Deschutes River Corridor. But absolutely no portion of these lots will be developed that's within 100 feet of the Deschutes River Corridor. So I'd just like to go through that briefly to give you some context. Because of the geography in the area, all development on these lots is going to be set back more than 200 feet from the river. A very, very small portion of each of these lots is subject to the Deschutes River Corridor. So Lot 4, approximately 5% of the lot is within the corridor. And it's only in the extreme northwest corner that it's within the Deschutes Corridor. And by the way, this is all set out in the November 15th letter from the project engineer Keith D'Agostino. Lot number five is the one that has the most, and it's only about 11% of the lot is within the Deschutes River Corridor. And then Lot 6 has approximately 5/100 of an acre is within the northwest corner. Also, the rim of each of these three lots, in Lot 4, it's 220 feet from the Deschutes River Corridor. In Lot 5, it's 180 feet, and in Lot 6, it's 230 feet. And as you know, we have to build behind the rim anyway. That's what the Parks Department is going to require. And, and, you know, you don't want to build below the rim anyway because you don't get views. So all of our development is going to be set back pretty far. And so this makes the hearings officer interpretation of the code really problematic because it means that if you ascribe to his view of the code, then what really determines whether you go through design review is the configuration of your lot. So if we would have designed this so that there's a thin lot right along the rim that takes up this property that's in the Deschutes River Corridor, and we create our lots just set back maybe 5, 10, 15 feet, well, then they wouldn't be subject, they, they wouldn't have any portion that's within the Deschutes River Corridor. And I can't believe that that's what's intended by the code. So finally, I think it's worth noting, as we've detailed in our written submissions, elimination of condition EE is not going to result in construction of enormous eyesores along the canyon rim. I absolutely understand why, although it's not the specific issue in front of you, but I would understand why you would have in the back of your head, hey, we're concerned about what the properties are going to look like in the future. You don't want them to be some ugly eyesore. But they're not going to because, A, the property remains subject to review by the Oregon Parks Department through the Oregon Scenic Waterways Program. And by the way, to Commissioner Dare's question, I am not positive whether we've gotten the extension yet or not, but we know that that that's something we need. I wish that we could be thinking about putting in infrastructure right now instead of having to wend our way through an appeal process, but, but here we are. But we do know that we've got to comply with that. We've had a very good relationship with Oregon Parks. It's been very cooperative. So whatever we build, we've got approval, tentative approval now for the subdivision, but whatever we build on any of those lots is also going to have to go through the, the review process with Oregon Parks. And by the way, they look at colors, they look at location, they look at the protection of the rimrock and all of those things. Anyway, that's A. B, the other protection for the property, as I noted at the last hearing, is that my clients have voluntarily agreed to subject the properties to significant restrictions, which will be memorialized in CCNRs, that will preserve the rim, the natural setting, and the visual impacts of development on the property. So they'll use, you know, natural colors, not non-reflective materials, that sort of thing. So for the reasons presented in our prior submittal and what I've just outlined, we request that you eliminate condition EE. Or if you're, you prefer, modify it to only require design review if and when development is actually proposed within the Deschutes River Corridor, i.e. 100 feet. Corridor, i.e. 100 feet of the high water mark of the Deschutes River. Now, while that is our preference, if you instead do find that the county code requires design review under DCC 1976090 for improvements on any portion of a lot, if any portion of that lot is within the corridor, then we ask that you at least modify condition EE to apply only to lots that actually have a portion within the corridor. And that would be Lots 4, 5, and 6. So for the reasons I've just outlined, we respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners either reaffirm the decision that you made earlier this year, or if you decline to do that, at least only subject condition EE to Lots 4, 5, and 6. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the testimony. So one question, would you say that that testimony you just provided is all in the record, as in, there's no new, new content for the record? Just to be real clear?
Absolutely. And absolutely, you may not have noticed, but I did try to shorthand it for exactly that reason, because I know you've heard this all before.
Well, and I'm thinking, the validity of the record at this point is kind of my mindset, you know, as the applicant.
Yes, I do not believe anything I've said is new.
Okay, thank you so much.
And the extension probably wouldn't be in our file anyway, because we actually heard this last year, probably before you actually had to think of applying. I just, you know, I just picked it up when I was reading it, and I was just like, oh gosh.
I saw that too, yep. Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
No.
Seeing none, thank you very much for your testimony. So are any other interested parties at this time for this public hearing? So Michael McGee has been added to the, the meeting here. And yeah, please provide testimony. Thank you very much for joining us.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Michael McGee, my address is 1148 Northwest Hill Street, Bend, Oregon 97703. I represent Sanders Nye and Danielle Nye, who are neighbors to this development. And Mr. and Mrs. Nye, Mr. and Ms. Nye did submit one of the letters that was inadvertently omitted from the record, although they did, they have been involved in the land use proceedings all along since last summer, when this was pending in front of the hearings officer. The Nye's concerns here primarily concern the applicability of that Deschutes River Corridor design review statute. And really, I think that the crux of the issue before you today, just as the hearings officer faced, is how to interpret that, the provisions of that review ordinance in a way that makes sense, considering the, the full context of that ordinance in a way that harmonizes the meaning of it. And I think particularly, maybe the issue is, how do you define property when you're looking at what that Deschutes River Corridor actually means? Does it, does property include a lot or a parcel that falls partly within that corridor area, or does it very narrowly just mean that 100-foot setback area that would be measured from the river? And so the hearings officer kind of wrestled with that question, and I think that the challenge was that, the hearings officer found, when he was reconciling the parts of that ordinance with each other, is that the ordinance has a very broad statement of policy. And it states that its purpose is to protect the natural beauty of the river and the river canyon, to conserve the riparian zone, and then to maintain the scenic, maintain the scenic quality of the canyon and the rimrock. And so those are all announced policies of the ordinance in question, DCC 1976090. And, you know, of course, the, the Nye's point of view is that the, the resource, that the river canyon itself is an invaluable resource. And it would make sense that for a special resource like that, that you would have a special review that would be required prior to any kind of construction or development that would impact those values. And hence, the reason to have something like this, a special layer of design review on top of the tentative subdivision application here. So it's, you know, we're not claiming that this is any kind of a bar or prohibition against development. It's just an additional safeguard, an additional review procedure that should apply when you have property that is touching and impacting that protected river corridor area. In particular, the, you know, the hearings officer noted some of the inconsistent results that really could be found if you had a narrow reading of this, of this ordinance. And, you know, some of those, it involved, you know, in addition to that 100-foot setback, there are other standards that are called for in this review. And they're, you know, they're not too different from the standards or the criteria that you might find in connection with a ordinary conditional use permit application or site plan application regarding, you know, compatibility and, you know, harmony discretionary standards like that. They're not impossible hurdles to overcome. They're just, they're just standards. And in particular here, there are some of the things that would be considered in this review would be whether or not the rimrock is protected, whether or not the project is compatible with the policies of the ordinance. And so those are things that really call for a broader approach and a broader interpretation of the statute. Another, another aspect of this is that there is a height limitation. And of note is that the height limitation, which is 30 feet, gets measured at the point of the setback. And so the question is, if you have a 30-foot height restriction that gets measured where the setback ends, how would that criteria ever be reviewed if, as the applicant is saying, a project is going to be exempt from this review as long as it's not within that 100-foot setback? So, you know, part of this ordinance does specifically expressly talk about development outside of that setback, in the form of this height limitation, in addition to the, you know, the multiple references to rimrock, which of course, is usually going to be set back farther than just 100 feet anyway. So those are the reasons why the hearings officer took a broader view, and in our mind, the correct view, which is that this river corridor design review should apply, even if the applicant is saying that they're not specifically going to build within the 100-foot setback, as long as the parcel itself has parts of it that are in that river corridor area. And it sounds like it's uncontested that at least some of these lots do contain, do fall within that area, whether it's three or six. But certainly, it's all along the river, those, the western edge of this development. So, so the Nye's position really is to encourage you to adopt the result that the hearings officer reached, to require this additional design review. I recognize that there are challenges in doing that because of the interface with the Bend jurisdictional elements here, with the Bend Area General Plan and the Bend Area Committee. But, you know, that's, that's not a reason to read this, to disregard the statute entirely. When the standards are set out clearly and the criteria are set out clearly, there's no reason why the county, in this case, can't enforce, interpret, and review its own policies and its own criteria for the development here. And again, you know, these are the same kind of discretionary standards that the, that the planning department, hearings officer, and the board encounter on a fairly regular basis when they're asked to assert their discretion to evaluate whether or not something is, is compatible in the broader scheme, the environment around the development. So that's what we're asking for. You know, in our view, this is an important resource, and, you know, it really warrants an additional review. And we are therefore hoping that the board will reconsider its prior decision and look at imposing the design review condition upon the six lots identified in the staff report, but at least the three that Ms. Cooper mentioned, when they are reevaluating this appeal. Thank you very much. I'm happy to answer any questions, though.
Thank you very much for the testimony. Is there any questions, Commissioner?
No, I've been reading your letter as you spoke, so just reviewing it. Thank you so much.
And no questions. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else for interested parties on this matter? Any other hands raised? So at this time, I'll acknowledge that this is a public hearing on the matter. It doesn't look like we have anybody else requesting to testify. So having these two oral testimonies provided, at this time, I'd think we're going to be closing the record. Kyle, you can help me?
Commissioner, may I rebuttal?
Oh, oh sure, yeah. If there's a rebuttal, okay, yep. Thank you very much for stepping in.
My apologies for interrupting. The reason I didn't speak up sooner was because I thought you, I didn't know if there was anybody else who was going to offer testimony.
Not a problem.
So I will try to keep this brief. I understand where Mr. McGee is coming from, but with all due respect, I do not believe that you should equate this to a conditional use permit, because this is an outright use that's permitted on this property. And to apply criteria that he's correct or similar to conditional use permit criteria is, I think, in essence, rewriting your code to take what is otherwise a permitted use and make it a conditional use. And I don't think that should be what you do with a code. And then I understand his belief that you should go and look at the code as a whole. And while I believe the code as a whole is still perfectly consistent in holding design review only to that 100 feet from the high water mark of the river, I also think that there's no need to get to the point of looking at the code as a whole, because the first rule of statutory interpretation is that you have to have an ambiguity in the code before you start going to look at the rest of the code to try to find a meaning or a reason or what the interpretation should be. And there, and that was cited in my, one of my letters in the last, the last hearing. There, in this case, there is no ambiguity. If you look at the code, it defines the Deschutes River Corridor as property within 100 feet of the high water mark of the river. It does not say property, a portion of which is within the 100 feet of the high water mark. Therefore, I think there is no need to get into interpretation here, because the statute is clear. And I will rest with that and request that you affirm your decision from December and January on this matter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that rebuttal testimony. At this time, yeah, Kyle, help bring it home. So I will acknowledge that that was rebuttal. There's no other request to speak on the matter, and the public, the oral portion of this public hearing is closed.
So at this time, Commissioners, as Peter referenced earlier, you have the option of closing the hearing and beginning deliberations today, if you so wish. You also have the option of extending your deliberations to a future date, if you'd like to do that. Otherwise, I would, I would take any additional questions that either the Commissioners have at this, this point in time, regarding either my testimony or, or either of the applicant or opponent's testimony.
So being an expedited, expedited process, are, Commissioner, are you comfortable in proceeding with deliberations?
I believe so.
Okay. So at this time, I support that also. So we are going to deliberate on the matter that has been provided for us today. Yeah, do you want to proceed at all?
Yes, I do. I agree with you. And it's a good thing we were both on the same side, isn't it?
It was a two-to-one, yeah, matter in the past, correct?
I know. So I can still see, looking at the Engineers Report and doing the one condition, the E, I believe it's EE or E, with the lots 4, 5, and 6, I still think what we did was the right thing to do.
Okay. So I'll put some words on that too. So, you know, the design review, I think for the Bend Area Plan and the history of this code, it sounds like the intention was small lots. And I've said this past, you know, when, these are large lots, these are 10-acre lots. But if there was a whole bunch of small lots, then this whole design review thing would matter so much differently. Also, you know, the slope and the rimrock and the setback, there's plenty of distance away from the river. So I come to the same conclusion also, that design review is only required within 100 foot of the high water mark. So that kind of answers our first, one of the items.
Yes.
Gotcha. So just, just to clarify, the board would be, on that particular issue, affirming the original decision issued in January?
Yes.
Yes.
And then, yeah, so remind me, what's the other one now? I was focused on that.
The, the other issue is actually raised by Liz Fancher and Ed Elkins regarding the road maintenance. And that was a much more complicated discussion. But ultimately, it involved whether or not there should be some specific condition regarding future road maintenance for the extension of Pacific Heights Road, or again, the existing portion of Pacific Heights Road in this case. Just to clarify what the hearings officer's interpretation, and then what the, the board ultimately ruled on this back in January, was the, the specific outlines for Title 17, which is our subdivision ordinance, Deschutes County, only requires that any land proposed for subdivision is currently accessed by a road constructed to county standards and under a maintenance obligation either by a local government, or a private landowner, or homeowners association. In this case, the, the property is currently accessed by Pacific Heights Road. It's currently under a maintenance obligation by the Pacific Cascade Heights Homeowners Association. The kind of wrench in all this is that there is a termination clause, which both county staff and the county road department are aware of, within that, that maintenance covenant from Pacific Cascade Heights, which says they could voluntarily elect to abandon their, their maintenance obligations at such point in time that someone outside of the HOA uses one of those roads to, to access a property outside of the subdivision. So in this case, if, if the applicant were to begin accessing the road, Pacific Cascade Heights could elect to disband their, their maintenance obligations. However, what was ultimately ruled on by the board was, this particular application is not an opportunity, or shouldn't be an opportunity, to collaterally attack that, that particular provision. It's, it's a much broader issue in terms of how road maintenance obligations are afforded to all rights of way within the county itself. And ultimately, there are other options to, to resolve that, is what the board found, one of which is a formal application by the Elkins in this particular case to clarify what the road maintenance obligations of any existing rights of way might have been. That could be through something like a declaratory ruling process, or ideally, some That could be through something like a declaratory ruling process, or ideally, something that, some type of private resolution between all the parties involved is, is ultimately what was pushed. And, and that language was included in the, the board's original decision.
And Kyle, just reading back on the Trend Site Consulting Letter, I did note last night when I was reviewing that Pacific Height Road serves only a limited number of residences, and it says 14 today, and 24 with the proposed subdivision. So, you know, at least it's not going, you know, it's not like three, and it's going to another 10. It's, there's 14 there already.
That's correct.
And I do come to the same conclusion, that this land use decision is not the, is not the place to, to resolve this matter. And, and I think, as I say, our previous decision acknowledges that, that it is a matter, but it's not to be decided on by this decision. And so I support the, you know, our previous decision.
And, and so do I.
There you go.
Are there any other questions from the board at this point?
No questions. So that will complete deliberations on the two substantive topics that were brought up, acknowledging that these four items were in the record and have been reviewed at this level of land use decision.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. So just to, to put it all out there and clarify, the board is voting to reaffirm both their original decision as well as the hearings officer decision with an amendment to condition EE regarding the Deschutes River Corridor Design Review Standards. And note that design river, Deschutes River Corridor Design Review Standards will only apply to development that occurs within 100 feet of the ordinary high watermark of the river, rather than properties that are partially within that, that corridor. And that this particular application is not the proper venue for resolving road maintenance, future road maintenance obligations for any roads.
I agree.
Yes.
Okay. I will have a written decision for both the Commissioners to review, hopefully in the next week or so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thanks for, anybody for joining us today.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Kyle, can I ask a question? Don't we need a formal motion and a vote, or no?
That is a good question. I would ask our legal counsel.
Typically, the county, I mean, the county Commissioners can certainly vote today, or they can elect to vote when they review and approve the final decision. It's really the Commissioners' discretion.
And, and, you know, my thought is, is that, you know, final written record is the moment to vote on this. The two Commissioners are on the same page as the, for a second time here. So, yeah, waiting for the final written record for myself.
Sounds good.
Kyle noted, we'll get that decision drafted and reviewed and back on your agenda in short order.
Great.
Thank you, Commissioners. And this was Adam Smith, Assistant Legal Counsel, for the record.
Thank you, Adam.
He's ready to go on a moment's notice. Okay. Thanks for working that through with, with us. And at this time, that'll be the conclusion of item number 12. Are there other items for today?
I think we had them already.
Yes, we did.
Didn't we?
Yes. So we do have another public meeting this evening. We're going to be joining the Sisters City Council in a remote meeting. So that'll just, that'll be at 5 o'clock tonight.
It will be, won't it?
Been a long day. So, okay.
It'll be my third night in a row. I'm like, oh, my gosh, I'm so lucky.
With that meeting adjourned, thank you.
Okay, great.